All right. It's 7:02. We actually have a quorum in the building. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda tonight is the additions and corrections to the -- actually, before we do that, let me welcome back a board member. Lindell Bol was appointed by the Brookline Select Board, previous board member, so it doesn't feel like a new board member appointment kind of thing, but welcome back, Lindell. Under additions and corrections, we have several tonight. First of all is my terrible typing, and we are not meeting on January 15th, as it says at the bottom of the agenda. It's January 16th. We need to add, under new business, a driver's ed lease with the car because the one deal fell through and we have to do a second driver's ed lease. And we also have to add, under new business, people's bank account signature cards because of a personnel change. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda, folks?
So if we don't have the --
Would you like one?
We're making forty copies right now.
Oh, okay. We'll have forty copies of the agenda moment here.
I'll have it up on my screen in a minute.
Okay.
Pull it up.
Next. Next item on the agenda is the members of the public. If there's anyone here who's here to speak on something other than the budget, now would be your time to make yourself heard. If you're here for the budget, there's a section for you later in the agenda. Anyone? Okay. Moving on to correspondence, I have one piece of correspondence that I actually need to read into the record. The rest of the correspondence, I will mention that I have received several emails, all in support of -- all pertaining to the reorganization of the Counseling Department. Anyway, the one that I need to read is from Ally Dirkoli, who's a board member from Townsend, who says that she's sorry, but she has to resign her position. She says it's been amazing and interesting, but she really feels unqualified and unprepared and unable to move forward. She's, you know, again, apologetic, and so -- We'll probably need a motion to accept her resignation, and we'll notify the proper board to see if there's an appointee for her. But, you know, I did email her back just personally and tell her that, you know, I was sorry to hear that, I would miss her, and thanked her for her service. So, you need a motion to accept that?
Am I a motion?
Sure.
Seconded with regret.
Sure. There's been a -- okay, so it's been moved and seconded to accept with regret the resignation of Alyssa Dirkoli by Emily and Twala. Any discussion on that? Anyone want to add anything to that? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Your wife, I just got one of the letters. Ask to be read tomorrow, maybe. What happened to that?
I don't have one that's -- oh, actually, the one letter that does say, please read it, I have some concerns about whether or not that should be read because it talks about student and student issues. I would sort of err on the side of caution and not read that. I can tell you that it's someone who supports the social worker position and is not -- but I was uncomfortable reading that letter myself, a little bit. I could give it to somebody for a ruling, I guess.
Yeah, I could read it for privacy concerns.
Okay. Actually, that's the one. Anyway, we'll wait for a ruling on that one. Anybody else have any correspondence that did not come to the whole board? Okay. Yes, Dan?
This question, did you just tell us, like, how many emails did you get that were about the position? Could you just give us a sense of, like, most people are for it, against it, or how many you had? Was it two? Was it twenty-two?
I got two -- I got two, three letters. I got three letters, emails, in support of the position.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
To Bob. Oh, Bob, has anyone reached out to you or called you regarding the social workers' position?
Yeah, it's been a few people I've had conversations with as well, and were able to explain sort of what the proposal was in its entirety and make sure that everyone understood the full picture and all the facts, make sure they were clear.
We'll let you go into that more later.
I had one that I wanted to move.
Right, that's in the list. Yes?
Joe, point of clarification. Would you please explain what you mean by in support of the position, for those of us who are not sure what you mean by "the" position?
Okay, so there's a proposal, as part of this year's budget, there's a proposal to rearrange the Counseling Department, to add staff that are school counselors, and to eliminate a position that is a clinical social worker. And, you know, not going into the reasons or the where, because we'll have more of that later. We've had some -- we've had emails saying, you know, giving people's opinions on whether or not we should retain the services of the social worker.
So to summarize, the letters are in support of the clinical position? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
And another point of clarification, you're not referring to the petition, all the people who wrote things on the petition. This is just letters you've received.
No, I have not been shown a petition.
I --
By the way, when you speak, could you please identify yourself for the record?
Absolutely.
And include the town that you're here for, and also speak up according to your account.
Stand up.
The town that you reside in.
Jeanne Hall of Newthing.
Okay. The board has not been given a petition.
Okay.
I have heard rumors that one exists, but we have not been presented with that, so that's not entered into this correspondence discussion.
I'm glad you don't read those two very specific things. I think it's fine.
Okay, sorting. I -- okay. So I can read a redacted version of this. I really think that, you know, to summarize it, to just say that, you know, they're in favor of their, you know, a mother of a student who's met with a social worker, received support, familiar with this. They're concerned that the positions -- they're concerned about the needs of these students being addressed by outside clinicians, and they close by saying that, you know, they hope for the mental health of all the students will be taken into consideration when we make this decision. You know, it's really just additional support for, you know, keeping the model the same, the way it is now, rather than making the change. So, yes?
My name is Peggy Meald, and I'm just curious, the way it is now does not seem to be broken, and I'm curious why you're trying to fix it.
That comes back up under public comment. We're going to try and move through the agenda. We have a Buildings and Grounds Committee report, and then we'll get down to that, and there's public -- you can ask those questions then. Okay? Thanks. Okay, so that's correspondence, folks. The next item was the Buildings and Grounds Committee report because after meeting with those engineers, I think that there may be some budget implications there. I don't know if you want to talk about it, Bob, or if you want to have one of the Buildings and Grounds people sort of talk about it initially?
I'm fine to explain it.
Okay, go ahead.
So you guys should have a copy of this page which says, "Criterium of the Land Engineers Report" at the top. So this is sort of a -- give you the short version. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met and went through, I think probably, an eighty-page report from the engineering firm that we contracted with to do sort of a needs assessment of the building, all the systems, structural, the whole thing, to help us craft a stewardship plan, what's formerly known as a capital plan, to figure out how, what the investment of the building needs to be moving forward, and what amounts of money are needed to bring it up to -- not code, that's not the right word, but to bring it to function, I guess, at this point. Repairs based on sort of a lack of investment, I guess, over the past several years to ensure that those things were being done.
In fact, I would go so far as to call it deferred maintenance.
Sure. The total that they went through, and so they have all these different items separated out with useful life of this particular element of the system, how old that element is now, what the cost is to replace, and then they helped develop a grid for us to consider part of developing a stewardship moving forward. The report talks about, it's a two-plus-million-dollar list of things that need to get addressed. And so those are things that the Buildings and Grounds Committee felt it was important for us to be aware of, what they all were. We've heard stories of things. We didn't have the exact details of what the costs were of each of these systems, but basically to have that list ready. It was the mindset, I think, of Emily Crichton from Rock, of that subcommittee to not necessarily act on that report right now, but to hand the report off to the new West River Board and their Buildings and Grounds Committee to look at all the buildings in the new district as a collective, and to make decisions at that point based on what the needs are across that new district. However, there were some parts of the report that were a little bit more emergent in the work, and so the Buildings and Grounds Committee charged Ed and I to sit down and look at the list of things from the report and try to make a list of things that were perhaps more needed quickly prior to the time it would take for that new board to kind of, you know, take over and get all that stuff together. So, really charging with the idea, like, health and safety was the phrase I think you guys used, or Twala, to think about what are the elements that we really need to do and consider now. Are they health and safety issues, and if so, we should probably talk to the board about that and adding it to the budget. It's not in the budget as it stands. So I've created this list for you with really three categories. The first three items are sort of safety categories. There's a -- the next section is also kind of safety, but more of a risk management, in that they're not necessarily emergent safety, but things that are really about how we manage our risk for liability exposure. And then the last one is around, is really about security, which is about safety, but it's sort of a separate category. I, based on some work we're doing this year on our camera system, and we just purchased new radios this year, the amount that we had originally scheduled or budget in this budget for next year for security services, I think we can use to do that security line, so I'm not asking for that money. So it's really the top two sections that we're talking about, which is the safety stuff is seventeen-five, the risk management stuff is nineteen-six, for a total of thirty-seven thousand one hundred. Other things I put at the bottom just to kind of keep in mind, I want to keep hitting this whenever I can, that the wood chip boiler is well past its useful life. Parts are not available. The engineer basically referred to it as obsolete. And if it fails, which is one of the questions, what happens if it fails? We do have an oil backup system, so we would be relying on that to heat the building. It's obviously going to be more costly, but certainly functional, to get us through until we would have a chance to replace the boiler. The second piece is water tanks. We have two storage, water storage tanks in the basement. They are also well past their useful lives and need to be replaced. They are covered in asbestos, and so that process includes asbestos abatement. The overall estimated cost of replacing those tanks is about sixty thousand dollars. The state, right now, because of the age of those tanks, has asked us to develop a plan for how we will replace them at the time that they fail. They're not telling us we have to replace them now. They could last another five years. They could last another five minutes. They're past the end of what they predict to be the useful life, so -- but that's another sixty thousand dollars. If that fails, unlike the wood chip boiler, where we have a backup system, you, depending on the damage and how big the leak is, what the flow is, we may have to shut down schools for a period of time because there'd be no running water, and it could be damaged down in the basement, music room, locker rooms.
How many tanks are there?
I'm sorry?
How many tanks are there?
There's two tanks.
So if one failed, we could still?
It's an interconnected system, I believe.
Yeah?
Yeah. One is the collection, and then the other one's sort of, I think the other one's a pressurized tank for pumping, I think.
So if one fails, the whole system fails?
We shut down. Yeah. So that was something just to consider. Again, it's not leaking now, but we know it's at the point where it ought to be thought about. It's roughly sixty grand to do it. We have a plan that we're writing with an engineer to file with the state to meet their requirements. We're having a plan, but that's really just the dot in the i's part. We do need to have that in the back of our minds at some point.
Another question. The estimated cost, how did you arrive, how were these estimated costs arrived at?
These are all from the engineering firm. Well, the water tank, one is actually from a separate engineering company that came in to study the water tanks when the state told us we had to have them looked at. The rest of the dollar amounts are all from this engineering firm that did that report.
Would it make sense to put these jobs out for bids to get more realistic estimates of what they'll cost?
Costly, except each of the jobs are less than what the requirement would be for putting them out to bid.
Well, it's not required, you know, it might be less than required to put it out for bid. That doesn't mean we can't put it out for bid to try and get a better price. You know, twelve thousand dollars, a nice big round number for replacing smoke detectors. You know, if we put it out to bid, maybe we'd get somebody to do it for eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, some of that, well, this is the cost of the actual detectors themselves. It doesn't include the installation, so that's the unit, the unit cost of all of those.
So again, we're not, these numbers are not, they're pretty rough estimates.
Well, this is a company that does this for jobs. I mean, I'm assuming that they're probably pretty accurate. The report has, trying to remember, at the bottom of the end of it, it talks about their source for their numbers is based on some kind of, I don't know, some sort of building guide or handbook that they use to estimate these things, and so I'm just going by what they told me.
Oh, okay. I would feel better about these numbers if we had, if we took one step further to have some real estimates done by contractors, because they might be high or low. You know, I mean, I'm sure that the engineering firm is good, but--
And I think Ed agrees with that, I think. We talked a little bit about that, because he thought the two million dollar number was kind of low in the first place, based on some of his understandings about certain things. So I think that's fair, that these could vary. I think if you guys want to take care of any elements of this and designate a bottom line, that we could prioritize which ones we can do and get to as many as you can with whatever that bottom line dollar amount that you guys were willing to add to the budget to do that.
So, thank you.
Go ahead.
So the three safety items are the first three on here, and that was what the Building Committee asked you to look at, safety, health and safety. That was my understanding, the twelve thousand was just the cost of the detectors.
Detectors.
And then we were going to put them in ourselves, is that correct, or we had to hire somebody to come in and do that?
I don't remember this.
I can't remember either. That's why I was asking. I, you know, I would suggest that if we are going to add money to the budget to do any of these items on here, and I would agree with Howie, if we are going to move forward with what would probably end up being a bond because of the significant expenses that we're going to be facing, we will need to be looking at a broader, you know, estimate, you know, probably, obviously anything over fifteen thousand, I think it is, has to go to bid anyway. So, but these pieces were, I mean, we were pretty, if I can just, you'll back me up, I think, we were pretty hard in the conversation we had as a Building Committee with the administration, saying, "This is not really the year." But, and we really preferred to see it go to the Building Committee that is going to be overseeing all of the schools. Plus, there is, I think now, Bill, am I right, that all the schools have agreed to have an audit done of their buildings to see?
That's right.
So there will be an assessment done of all of our buildings, and we really wanted to put it off. But when it came to health and safety, we didn't feel like we had the ability to put it off. And so we asked you to bring that to us. So for me, these are the items that I think that we need to take seriously, and if we feel like we can't do them, well, then we take responsibility for that as well. But I'm not as worried about the cost of these things, because when we go to buy them, I would hope we'll be looking. We always do. We always look and see.
Shop around.
Yeah, exactly. So we don't need to go to bid to try and find a good price.
And I think as far as the installation goes, I remember the stair tread conversation. Ed said he would do that himself.
Yes.
I don't remember that with the smoke detectors. I feel like that's more involved.
We were also looking for a list of things that we can accomplish now, and then have the bigger picture as we went forward as a board.
Right. Well, and part of, I mean, and so, and in this budget, there are, I forget the exact dollar amount, but there's a chunk of money assigned to do sort of annual, smaller annual projects, not these big, you know, these big sixty thousand dollar tank type ones, but smaller ones. And that money this year, and probably a good chunk of that money in the budget for next year, is really used up by the, I'm going to say the brains of the heating system, the--
Yeah.
Oh, the controllers.
The controllers for the heating system. As we replace all of those, piecemeal as we go, that's what we're doing now. And then the idea is that once you have those controls replaced, then you'll know whether the mechanics of the heating units work, but you have to do the electrical parts first. So there may be extra money in next year's, you know, annual project fund that we have in the local budget, based on if those controllers, you know, if we replace those and there's not a lot of mechanical needs, but we could also need to overrun that amount as well, so.
And I think it's fair to say, and Twala again, step in if you think I'm not speaking clearly to it, but we did expect that we were going to have to replace our furnace this year. And Drew, who's not here tonight, is also on the Building Committee, and he was seriously concerned about us deferring that, because if the furnace goes down, obviously you close your school. It's in the winter time. And, by the way, it's a heating and ventilating system as well that we have. So, you know, even if it's warm, there's no ventilation without the--
And one other piece, too, it gets into the weeds a little bit, but part of the, it's not just as simple as replacing a boiler. The space that's in has to be modified. If you're going from chips to pellets, you have to modify the, I mean, there's a whole systems approach that would have to be looked at, and when you think about the burner itself.
Well, what I was going to refer to is the fact that, what Drew didn't know, that Twala and I did know, was that we have, we actually do have a backup furnace here, and it's an oil furnace. And while it would obviously blow our budget, we don't, we wouldn't have to close school down if our furnace did decide that this was the year it was going to quit on us. So we do have backup heat, and in fact, we've had to, when the furnace wasn't working, we did have to, last year, I think it was.
It's been, I think, every year. There's always a short break where somebody has to get repaired.
We have to bring in oil for furnace. So this is, I bring it up because I think it's a really important issue that needs to be dealt with, and many of us don't think that oil is the best way for us to be heating our furnace.
There's that, too.
Joe, can I?
Sure.
I'm brand new, but on the basis of your presentation right now, I mean, part of the previous, the water tanks are really, that seems like the one thing, doesn't have a backup.
Correct.
And if those old things leaked, that would be catastrophic.
Yeah, I mean, you have to shut water off, and if you have no running water, you don't have bathrooms, you don't have food for lunches, you can't have school.
Yeah, so I'm a--
And ironically, you also don't have water at the Town Hall.
Oh.
Because I think it's all, because it's connected to their well. Our well is connected to their water supply, honestly, to us as well, I believe. Or maybe, because maybe it runs on that side of tanks. I'm not sure exactly how it's connected.
So is it now liable for some of this?
No.
They definitely lose water when we go down.
When we have to shut it off, they lose water. Whether or not they can, we can divert water to them while we replace the tanks, that I don't know.
I'm not even sure of that.
I don't know. But the tanks are ours. We own the tanks. And the building, from what I understand from Ed, because of these tanks and the size of them, the building was constructed around the tanks. So these are original, so the building.
Yeah.
Critical. What would cause it to fail, though? Are they corroding? Are they?
Just past the useful life.
Well, yeah, a lot of things go past their useful life.
Well, that's what I said, it could be five years.
I'm past my useful life.
Yeah, I mean, it could last another five years, Howie. That's the thing, is you don't know.
Have we inspected? Can you put a scope in there to take a look at the inside, see if it's corroded? Is there--
I don't know. I don't know. I can ask Ed, get more information about that.
I would say chances are, though, you know, if I say something like, "Well, tomorrow."
At least it won't be on the record, huh?
Can I just make a comment about that? It's not on your list.
Right.
I think it's of course to know that it's not on the list, and I mean, we were pretty strong voiced about this, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the water tanks. We know the risk, and we still said we thought we could, the risk wasn't so high that we couldn't wait another year on it, on the water tanks. I'm not, I mean, it could, it could go tomorrow. There's no question. We know that.
At least it won't be a surprise to you guys if it doesn't.
Well, let's hope it doesn't. We have to base it on, not on our--
It will be a surprise to the Town Office.
I think our building person felt that we could, that was one thing we could wait on. So it's not on this list.
Okay. So, that was, that's what you wanted to get on record before--
Right, so before, I mean, yeah, it's time you guys are going to adopt a budget, the bottom line. I just want you to be--
Okay.
--making some understanding around what this is and doing what I was asked to do by that committee.
Okay. Thank you. Lori, that brings us to you.
I'm going to let Bob start.
Oh, you're going to let Bob start?
The difference between draft two and three.
Okay.
All right. You have a small chart. I think it's on the other side of your building.
Right.
One. Looks like this. And this is, the changes in draft three. So, overall, the draft three is a reduction from previous year's bottom line of ninety-five, eight-seventy-five. It's a slight tweak from draft two, which was in November, which was a slight tweak from draft one in October. The two adjustments up, one of them, there was, so there's a contractual, there's contractual language in the master agreement that teachers have to report column changes by a certain date, and so that date came and the column change notification was given by certain teachers, and so the budget was addressed to include those column changes. So that's one increase from the previous draft to this draft. And then the second increase was a point F2, FT, of the school social worker. So Joe mentioned the elimination. Really, with this new draft, we're really talking about a reduction, not elimination. So the current funding for that is a point six, so this is a reduction to a point two. The additional subtlety of this, this is something that Lori and Stephanie Betty Hancock have been working on for, since October, really, since we started talking about this, was was there a way to fund that part of the school social acquisition through the special education budget, knowing that there, that there's counseling on students' IEPs that may require someone to perform that particular service, and therefore, funding can flow through special education, which means that for a portion of that, you get a level of reimbursement. And so that, once that was all worked out, we felt comfortable putting that point two back in for this draft three. And I mean, Lori can speak to a little more about that, but that's basically the gist of why that was adjusted back up. And then the down adjustment, we have, as teachers began to select insurance plans for, well, really, for the rest of this year, but including the logic for the next school year as well, we were able to adjust down some things based on, I mean, there was some up and down probably, but the overall gain, I think, was a down on insurance plans, and wasn't a lot down. But that's what brought us to the new number with the new draft of the budget.
Okay, thanks. You have a question?
Yeah. Kristen Johnson, Newthing. I'm puzzled that I didn't hear an action plan related to the water tanks and the boiler. It sounded like very important topics, but I have no idea what you all are planning to do. And I wondered if that's going to be dealt with later, or you're going to deal with an action plan resolution now?
Those, I imagine those will get dealt with at a later date. Based on the Building Committee's recommendations, those are things that can wait and be dealt with next year by the new combined district and probably with a bond issue. We're going to be looking at all the schools, and we're probably going to be looking at somewhere in, I would guess in the millions, to put all the physical plants into shape to be used. So, yeah, that's, those are going to be pushed until, at a later date. All right.
And, sorry, just to add to that, Joe, part of the conversation at that subcommittee was that there may be an economy of scale around doing that collectively, rather than just doing something for legal and correct.
Which was a reason to--
Which is the whole point of merger, right.
Anything that could hold.
Okay. Are you ready for me now?
That's the whole--
Oh, it's written.
Yes.
All right.
Please.
Okay, so, let's talk a little bit about the budget first and the deficit. So, there was a fifty thousand dollar deficit, roughly fifty, and we have a draft audit now, and we were able to, some things that had been carried for the last few years, we were able to correct in this audit, and so now the deficit is about twenty-three thousand.
That's much better.
It was, it's actually thirty for this year, but you had a little bit of a surplus last year, so the net result is twenty-three thousand.
Okay.
So I've done some analysis on fiscal year eight-- So I've done some analysis on fiscal year eighteen. Uh, there's some additional revenue that was unbudgeted, unanticipated revenue, that is coming in for eighteen. So I would recommend that we let the deficit roll and that there, the surplus next year of the additional revenue will cover it. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Emily's giving me the...
I just hate, I'm just, it's just my, my gut instinct tells me when we have a deficit, you cover it. And so, but I, but I respect that opinion, and I appreciate it.
Okay. So now let's talk tax rates. So, um, all of you have...
Is that the hot pink sheet?
Yes, the hot pink, because that's all we have in our office, is hot pink. Okay. So all of you have, um, basically your town. So I, I wanna talk a little bit about the tax rate, of course, for Leland and Gray, but I also want everybody to understand on the board here, because you represent a town, what your town is dealing with from a elementary school level as well. So, but first, let's, let's just cover up the school side, and let's just look at Leland and Gray. So, everybody has their town in front of them? All right. So, looks familiar to you, right? It's very much like the, uh, three-year comparison that is published every year, which by the way, is not out yet. Um, so we have expenditures, which I put in sixty-two, uh, I'm sorry, six million to eleven, right there, and that is without the deficit. So I went ahead and, and made that change. Then, of course, you have your offsetting revenues, which gives you your ed spending. So everybody's familiar with that. Now, equalized pupils did come in higher than anticipated, so that's, um, important. That was a, a big help.
Huge.
Yeah, so I, I was estimating about two sixty-three, so came in two sixty-seven. You're on line four, equalized pupils for Leland and Gray.
Can you just make sure you explain that, what equalized pupils are, how it's calculated?
Sure.
Quickly, because I think everybody could benefit from that.
Right, so the equalized pupils are a two-year average that then go through a different ratios as far as poverty, um, state place students, that type of thing, and it come, you come out with your equalized pupils. Now, over the course of time, with Act forty-six, we've built, or before Act forty-six, we've built up phantom students because the state would not let you drop in your equalized pupils more than three point five percent. But with Act forty-six, if you look at the law, section twenty-three and, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three, it takes away that, um...
Hold harmless protection.
Yeah, the hold harmless. So, so now, we're seeing large drops in equalized pupils across the state. Um, Leland and Gray was, uh, hit very hard last year, and we expected it to be a little bit less this year, but, um, it came back at two sixty-seven. So that is the final number that I'm, changed just this morning, so, hot off the press. Okay, so that gives you your ed spending, um, per pupil of nineteen thousand dollars. So you are over the threshold. So, um, you know, the threshold is something that was put in place back in Act sixty-eight, and basically as a cost containment measure. Um, and it's calculated using, this one is, which is in line ten, sorry, try to point to the right line here, is seventeen eight one six. It's up a little bit from last year. Um, this is calculated from two thousand fifteen, and then you add the, uh, it's the NEAP CPI, which is, as we all love acronyms, New England Economic Project Cumulative Price Index, and so that's coming from the Department of Labor. So that, that is added, and that's where that number comes from. So, um, now we are down to what you are over. So you are over this threshold by five hundred and forty-eight dollars. So that is what you're paying a penalty on. So that is added to your per pupil cost of nineteen one oh one on line five, and that is what, on line twelve, that is your per pupil cost with the penalty. Now, it's, just to be clear, because this question has come up a lot to me, do you pay the penalty if you are income sensitized? So you pay only on your income? And the, the answer is yes. Everybody pays a piece of the penalty. So whether you're paying on your property or income. Um, let's see here. So the exclusions, if we jump back up to eight, that number has not come back from the state, but, so this is last year's, and I expect it to be very similar to that number there. And then we come down to line thirteen, which is the yield. So the yield comes out by the commissioner, and that was reduced this year a little bit. So I think that many of you have heard the governor and also the secretary talk about this, you know, that the taxes are going to go up eight or nine cents, depending on which version you hear, um, and that is built into the yield. So by the yield dropping, that is taking that into consideration. All right, so now, line fourteen, we are at a dollar ninety-nine, almost two dollars, basically. So that compares with a dollar ninety-one from last year. So now, let's just look at it in terms of what's happening in the town. So, I don't know, do we have anybody from Jamaica here? Pick on Jamaica. So Jamaica is facing a penalty as well. If you look at Jamaica's and you work it right down the, the same way, um, you, they're looking at a two thousand dollar penalty. This is with the last draft of the budget. They're working very hard on their budget, and everybody should be aware of that in your town, that your, your administrator and , uh, school board are working very hard to bring that down, but, um, that's where it was the last time we met. So as you can see in line seventeen, uh, your, Jamaica is at thirty-four cents, or nineteen percent up from last year, if nothing changes. So we're hoping that comes down. Then it runs through the CLA. Now, CLA is, um, is basically the equalizer. That's a good way to term it, isn't it?
I like that.
The equalizer, yeah, okay. So it was developed to, uh, equalize what is paid in education property taxes across towns, and it's a result of an equalization study that is performed by the tax department and is not done yet. So these are fiscal year eighteen CLA numbers. But as you can see, in the town of Jamaica, their CLA worked for them, and in other towns, if you look at Newfane or Brookline, it worked against them. So that's how it, how it works. So I don't know if, you know, we wanna just go down through and, for the sake of just looking at every town, um, and we'll take the, uh, number before CLA because that's the number that we can all, um, come to. So this is for Brookline and Leland and Gray, the taxes are, will be going up ten cents, uh, or six percent. Jamaica, as I said, is thirty-four cents, nineteen percent. Newfane is six cents or four percent. Townsend is twenty-three cents, thirteen percent. Wyndham is thirty cents, uh, seventeen percent. And again, all the towns are, all the elementary schools are working very hard on their budgets to bring them down. Um, so I know that you've asked me before to just kinda give a, a rough idea, right? So if you have somebody with a two hundred thousand dollar house, what does that mean, right? And, you know, so ten cents is, you know, you're gonna go up ten dollars, right?
Two hundred.
Two hundred dollars in a two hundred thousand dollar house, sorry. Um, so for every ten cents, that's what it is. And so on the income side too, so that's what I liked about this sheet, and this sheet actually is available to everybody on the Department of Taxes website. So it's, it's a great tool to look at. Um, what I liked about this sheet was if you work it all the way down to the income sensitivity, you can see there how that also goes up as well proportionately. Questions?
So I just, a comment. It looks like of the five towns, the only ones who aren't over the excess spending threshold are Newbrook, which is Newfane and Brookline.
That is correct.
Everybody else is over.
They are using fund balance to stay...
Keep themselves under.
To keep themselves under.
So they would have been over, but they have a fund balance. Okay.
That's correct.
So just to sort of summarize, the overall budget for Leland and Gray has gone down under the scenario, and everybody's taxes are going to go up.
That's correct.
Emily, I hope you take this back up to Montpelier and find out what is going on.
The per pupil also has gone down, so that's the, that's...
Yeah, but the net cost of our school, the overall dollar, no matter how many kids we have, our school has cut our budget and everybody's taxes is going up.
That's not the truth. It's not about no matter how many children we have. When our numbers of equalized pupils goes down, it goes up.
The fact is, this building, the money it takes for, this building to be run for however many students we have, we have cut our budget, and our, our constituents' taxes are going up.
So if we had the same equalized pupils that we had last year, we would not be over the threshold. But because of the equalized pupils being reduced...
This is doing state funding chicanery.
I don't know how losing students could be blamed on the state, on the state funding.
Yeah, but losing students doesn't make our costs go up.
It does when it's a statewide system.
No, it doesn't make our costs go up. When you have less students, it doesn't cost more to run the school.
It should cost less, but it doesn't.
Actually, it does because you can't, I mean, if you lose ten children, you can't just reduce staff because of losing ten kids.
So this is a crappy way of funding our school. The term of funding is, is accomplished. It needs to be, it needs to be dealt with on a statewide, on a, on a, on a state basis. We're up there. Something needs to be done about this. It's not fair.
So, any other questions?
Anybody? Board? All right, questions for Bob, Lori, budget stuff, anything at all?
Um, I, I just go back, if you don't mind?
No, not at all.
Really quickly to the building issues because, um, I think, you know, this is serious, and it, it actually really concerns me that we're not addressing the issues that are here today because of, because of what we have made decisions to do, which is to defer our, um, maintenance of our building in many ways. Some of this is, um, just an aging facility, and I, and, and we are not alone. I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that, but over the years, we have, um, put less and less into our building and needed, actually, to put more and more in. So I, um, we're looking at a, um, document here that I think the administration is asking us to make a decision on, whether we're going to add, um, money to the budget, which we've already looked at under this pink sheet. Um, anything we decide to do on this will, will increase what we're looking at on our pink sheets. I, and I'm speaking not from the building, I'm not speaking for the building committee, but I'm speaking for myself on this, and I don't know how to not address those first three safety items. I, I mean, as much as I don't wanna see our taxpayers have to pay more money, I, I just feel like if we've got health and safety issues for our students and our staff and our building, we need to take care of that. And, and I think we were pretty, um, we were pretty clear when we spoke to the administration, saying, you know, look really hard and, and tell us to assess that. And so I appreciate the effort that was put into it. We have some other things on here that are under risk management, and, um, I, I feel, it's hard for me to not do them. This is torture.
And two of them are just Band-Aids, temporary repairs to get to a larger repair.
But given what we're looking at here, I'm struggling with, um, those other four items totaling another twenty thousand. So I would, I, I'm just gonna say, from my perspective, I think we absolutely have to do those first three. I don't know how we ignore them because they are health and safety issues. So I would make a recommendation that we increase our budget by the seventeen five. I'm sorry, I don't, I can't make the decision on the nineteen six, if you guys might be able to convince me.
So that would be the number?
If you've added it, yes. It's, it's not that I don't think these are important, but I, I, I guess I will just say one other thing. There is an ongoing building committee at the, I'm not on that committee, but there's a building committee at the, um, merge board level, the West River Board level, and they are taking a look at our buildings, and they're taking this very seriously, and they recognize it's not just Leland and Gray. All of our buildings have, will have some degree of need, um, over time. And we're trying to assess it, not just for what the needs are today, but what the needs are long-term. So I, I think that there is some value, as much as this risk management stuff is pretty important, there's some value in looking at, let's just take the first one, the Dutton front step ramp repair. I, I think what this is, is just us doing a patch, am I right? On this, it's just, we, and we've done it once before, right? We've done a patch on the, on the front, um, Dutton front step. What it really needs to have done is it taken off and replaced. And that's gonna cost a significant amount of money, but if we are, if we can, um, put those things together into a, a big picture around the five, um, five buildings that we have, maybe we can do that at a much reduced price, is what I would hope. So, um, I hate to throw five thousand dollars into something that we're gonna tear off. And, and, but, but I also, you know, you didn't pop that up to the safety issue. You put that under risk management. So I'm gonna still stick with the, the three safety issues. I don't know how to avoid them. I think we need to deal with them. And the board can do that a little while.
You have a clarifying question?
Well, I was curious, Howie raised, I think, Dan DeWalt, sorry. Howie raised a very legitimate and factual point in that the overall budget of the school is lower and our taxes are going up. And currently, I'm hearing, on a regular basis on VPR, I'm hearing the Speaker of the House, I'm hearing senators in the Budget Committee and other committees, and what, it almost seems to be a growing, it's not consensus yet, but there's very frank talk that in the legislature, the current way to be funding education doesn't work, just as Howie said. And that one of the things that's gonna be happening in the next session is a serious look at how we're gonna redo our financing of education. We had mentioned this last year, there was, there was a Senate bill, SB fifty-two. We couldn't seem to get Emily interested in, well, she pooped, she just said it wasn't ever gonna happen, but it seems that the rest of the legislature recognizes that this actually is a legitimate beef, that the way the equalization is done, the way the state has set up, the, how you pay for the schools, is not a just and equal system, and they're actually thinking about changing that. So could Emily, would you be our emissary to actually take what, how we said into account and explore? It seems like you should be on the cutting edge of knowing what these changes are in the wind, in the legislature, because that's gonna make a huge difference in what these budgets mean to everybody in these towns.
So I guess you're speaking to me?
Well, you're the only one that goes to Montpelier.
And I'm happy to respond to that. And I'll, I'll just say, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna, I'll, I'll...
I was, I was gonna say, this really, this sort of is a tangent to this conversation. I'd like to keep us focused and move so long as we have a very full agenda and a lot of people here who wanna speak. Um, and, you know... of people here who want to speak, and, you know, although I really would like to allow you to answer.
Well, I'm just, I would just say, very briefly, I will just say that, that I didn't not take interest, this is a huge piece of interest for me, and that, that bill that's out there, JFO has given us in the legislature, the recommendation that it will not work for us, and so the look, so we're looking, Dan, hold on, we're, we're looking and we've been continuing to look, and we are, right now, there are folks up in the legislature looking at the ed funding system, the governor's looking at it, the legislature's looking at it, we're trying to find a better way, the thing is, we're held up as a, as one of the most equitable models of ed funding in the country, and so it's really hard to find something else that is going to make it better, our biggest challenge is around the loss of 27,000 students over the last number of years, and that's where all of this is stemming from, it's the loss of our, our, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so does the board have any other questions for Lori or Bob or anything?
I have a question for Bob, has to do with your suggestion of reintroducing a .21TE social worker position, the funding comes out of the special ed budget, is that going to impact the ability of the social worker to provide their services to the entire student population, or is it going to limit it to some?
Good question, do you want me to just get into the, so I'm talking about the reorganization piece again?
I mean, is there more that you want to talk about?
Well, I have a, I have a handout there.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about the reorganization as the answer to that, you know, get everything that you want to get out on the table, out on the table, and then we'll move down to the public comment, and then we'll move forward with the, the agenda, so.
All right, so the reorganization proposal here first came up really last spring, when you were talking, we had the opportunity to have a retirement or a departure in, from a secretary position, which freed up some funding to try to think about how to do something different for this fiscal year, that didn't, that didn't come to fruition, but the, the challenge that we have is we have a position that is held by a person who's retiring, and that position is a mix of two different things, it's a .25 counselor and a .75 director of student services, the .75 administrative position is basically the number two in command of the building, so with that retirement, there's a lot of things to consider around the restructuring piece of that, when the, when that person, the director of student services, and I talked last spring about this initially, it was, it was really her suggestion that we go in this route, in the reorganization part, because she knew that the position in which she sat was not a viable or workable model with that split for lots of different reasons, not the least of which is that it didn't give her the time that she really needed to do counseling with kids for her caseload, and so a lot of that responsibility fell to someone in a different position, so, because it was only, she was only a .25. Her belief at the time was that this reorganization would create a better opportunity for all students to access the services that we need to provide for them from the top down, and so I wanted to sort of go through the, the proposal a bit, because I know there's a lot of, I guess a lot of misunderstanding, I think, and maybe I haven't been very effective at explaining it, I think I was, it was not the .2 piece until I knew that the special ed budget could support that, and the implications that you, that you asked about, and how that would all play out, I didn't want to talk about that until I knew for sure that that was going to be manageable, but in, in the chart that I have, I just want to walk through the differences between what is the present model and what is the proposed model, under the present model, there are the equivalent of 1.25 FTEs, full-time equivalents of school counselor, in the new model, there's 2.0 FTEs, in the old model, there's a .6 FTE of school social worker, and in the new model, a .2 FTE, which is a reduction of two days a week from three to one, that makes the total within this, with this department go from 1.5 to 2.2, which is like a 19% increase in staffing, so, you know, a lot of the conversation has been around a reduction in a position and not really about an expansion of overall services, which is really what I'm trying to, to get across to folks. We have currently also an outside provider who comes in for one day a week, and that position would stay, I did not include that in the totals there, because I think that's sort of a wash, it's not part of our budget. There's a series of, in thinking about this from a, from the system standpoint, there's a series of services that we, that are beneficial services, there's services that were not being met through the existing model, we have a gap in a lot of school family outreach, we had a gap in proactive instruction around social skills universally, meaning to all students, we had a gap in deliberate work around PLP development for all students, and we're well behind the curve on that from the state. PLP is personalized learning plans, every student is supposed to have one, and we're also short on offering career development planning for our students specifically in the middle school, and in part, that's not the fault of the person in that position, but because of the nature of how the position was created. So with this new, with this new proposal, the, three of those four gaps, if you will, are, can all be met, in fact, so I guess my argument is that there's, there's an increase in staffing, there's more services to all kids, and to try to, to try to illustrate it, I used the triangle at the bottom, so one of the, one of the educational terms that are used, and research has been developed around what they call response to intervention, and they, they create, and from what they now call multi-tiered system of support, and it can be used to talk about instruction, it can be used to talk about behavioral interventions, it can be used to talk about counseling, and social development, and so what I'm trying to highlight here, and they use these, these percentages of 80, 15, and 5 to highlight those tiers and separate those tiers, so tier one is the, is the bottom tier, the 80%, and this is what all students receive, sort of universal instruction, if you will, and under this plan, with increased staffing in the school counselor position, I'm able to, I won't say better do this, because we aren't doing it now, we're able to do this for the first time, direct instruction, the social skill development, the career education, and be more preventative and proactive in dealing with these issues with all middle school students, all of them, which is something we're not really doing. Tier two becomes the students who need, the 15% of the students, who need some kind of counseling services, maybe sporadically, maybe regularly, but, but they need it as part of their, a part of their program in order to be successful in school, one element that I would say about this tier is that this tier can be met by a school counselor, and this is something that is, I think, another part of the confusion for folks, is it's a shift to how school counselors have been used historically, not only nationally, but also here, and that's something that, that school counselors are qualified to do, and then.
Excuse me, could you, could you just back that up with some, with some kind of information, because that's not really true.
You need to hold your comments.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Hold that, that particular question.
I'm happy, I'm happy to answer, because it's actually pretty relevant, the American School Counsel Association has a list of appropriate and inappropriate activities for school counselors to do, and under the appropriate school activity, activities for school counselors, they provide providing individual and small group counseling services to students, so many of these people are trained in, in counseling, they have master's degrees in counseling, and some of them have masters in clinical psychology, some have masters in school counseling, but they all have training in counseling, and I think this is part of the confusion that a lot of folks have, and, so I was a history teacher, just want to give you a little background, in the late 1800s, during industrialization, as people, as schools started to realize that they had a role in preparing kids for a career, we saw the first, what they called at the time, a guidance counselor, and the guidance counselor model was basically around the idea of how to find work for kids, how to make sure kids were paired with appropriate job skills, that model existed through probably everybody in this room's high school experience, including my own, I had a very like rumpled guy who smelled of stale cigarettes and told me where I should go to college, he was not someone I was going to get counseling from, he gave me guidance around career and college and making sure I signed up for the SATs, in the last 20 years, though, that has shifted incredibly, in fact, the title has shifted, you'll notice that when I quote it, it was the American School Counsel Association, but we don't call them guidance counselors anymore in this profession, we call them school counselors, in fact, there is one movement that refers to them as professional school counselors, meaning that they're professional counselors in a school setting, so I think that there's a lot of underestimation around the skills that these people possess, and we haven't here asked them to do that work, but they're clearly qualified and they're clearly able to do that work, so that part, I feel 100% certain that we have the ability to, to provide that tier two instruction, tier two counseling service to folks using the school counselor model, in fact, I will say this, that the tier three counseling service in many schools, including some in RSU, use the school counselor to provide IEP-directed counseling service for school counselors to do, because that's who they have in those buildings, so there are three buildings in our district that do that, here in RSU that do that, so that's not unheard of, to have that happen from a school counselor perspective as well, in this model, though, what I'm talking about is the one day a week social worker providing that level of service, and then the school counselor is doing the other, the other element of that, so using that, that sort of the 80, 85, with the 80, 15, 5 model, thinking about how that works, we would, we would really sort of recreate and reimagine what our school counselors are able to do, we're better utilizing the skills of the staff we have who have been trained in this new world order of what a school counselor is able to do as a, as a counselor, and for the numbers of students that we have in the building, which is not the same as the equalized people count, all right, that's the whole formulaic thing, we have probably 280, 285 actual students in the building, and when you think about 5% of those numbers, and you think about what a person one day a week could do, even individually seeing kids, never mind the group setting, there's, there's, and then you add in the other outside person who's also doing that tier three work, you're easily up to, up to 10 to 12% covered within that tier three, which is well above what the 5% of this model looks at, so in my, in, in the way that I'm looking at this, we, and that's if they're seeing just individually, if they're seeing groups, then obviously you have a bigger capacity with more students to be able to see, so that number could really grow to be, you know, closer to 18 or 20% even, depending on the numbers of groups and so on and so forth, still allowing time for case management and other, other time without direct kid working, so in thinking about that, it's my, it's my feeling that this, that the .2 school social worker part funded through Spen, plus this other outside person provides well over the 5% that we need for tier three, the tier two is taken over by the school counselors in that model, and then additionally, because we have additional staffing in that school counselor realm, they can now initiate a true, what they used to refer to as the guidance curriculum, which is career work, social skill teaching at, in the middle school level, things are done in our elementary schools by our school counselors, so that's the model that, that I'm sort of proposing that we've moved to, so just a quick recap, it's an increase in overall staffing for students' well-being and social emotional learning, it's funded in a different way, part of it through special education, and to get back to Bob's initial question, a lot of the students who are in that top tier are students who are designated to receive those services through an IEP or through a 504, but because special ed allows special educators who are paid through special ed the ability to perform some services outside of that, there is the ability for them to see other students who are not part of that particular cohort, but it also provides the other, the other outside clinician and the tier two work to be done for, for some of the students as well who may not qualify in that regard, so in thinking about that, you have to prioritize clearly the students who are tier two and tier three, to ensure that the tier three students are getting what they need through the school social workers one day a week, and the outside clinicians one day a week, and then the rest of the students, you have to ensure that they're getting what they need through the tier two instruction, do individual or group sessions with the school counselors, and then you would plan out this tier one approach, so that's, that's really what the plan is, and I, I regret that I wasn't able to really talk about the, the .2 much earlier, because I feel like that might have alleviated some of the concern that came up by people around the elimination of the position, but I really needed to make sure that special ed was able to figure out a way to do this and fund it, because I felt like that's really what, what that target audience was typically going to be, and that gave us the ability to get re.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement through, from the friends around, around the use of those monies. I hope that answers your question, Rob.
I'm sure it does, I'm not sure I understand it, hopefully, I'm not quite as smart as the rest of you, I just want to make sure that.
You're next.
In your proposal, the social service, social worker services can be provided to the entire student body if the need arises, without having to meet certain criteria?
Yeah, so you, well, I mean, when you say sir, so if there's a crisis situation that occurred, and we needed the person to be available for a consult or to be involved in a crisis situation, then absolutely, and that part is going to be absolutely included as far as whole school work, primarily, though, the focus is going to be on a very small percentage of kids who are at that top tier, and the associated case management of them, which means consultations with families, consultations with teachers, consultations with admin and the other counselors, so it's all kind of part of that, that oversight of working on the case management.
And it's your feeling that with a one day a week, and with the help of an outside consultant, or you will be able to meet all the needs that the school has been experiencing, is currently experiencing?
I do, yeah, and again, just to reiterate, the other, the outside persons, that's not new, that's not part of my reorganization, that's here, I'm just highlighting that it's part of what exists already, so that's not a change, that's something that's already going on, so, yeah, I am, I am confident we can meet the needs of all of our students, not only the top tier of the students in, in the middle tier who need those counseling, but in fact, be way more proactive about the tier one with this model, to ensure that down the road, you have fewer kids in tier two and tier three, and that's kind of the idea of the, of solid tier one, whether you're talking about literacy instruction, teaching how to follow rules and behavior, or whether you're talking about counseling services, the idea is that you, you lead them to a place where they come off of those tiers and can work back into the 80%, so that's, that's, I do believe we can, we can do that.
Thank you for a very clear and articulate explanation of your position, I have heard a lot of people, a lot of disagreement with this position by a lot of people, I'm a Newfeng rep, a lot of Newfeng residents, a number of them currently in the room, and I would love to hear them express that point of view again.
I'm sure you'll get your chance in a minute or two here to get that, Emily, you had a question?
Yeah, I want to go.
You had a question, Mindell, then Howie?
To tier one, again, I, I think I heard you say that we're not doing much of what's in tier one today, that, that, that service isn't available for students, or, or not in the, not in the model and manner in which you're proposing it, that's my first question, and the second question goes around outreach beyond just working with students in our building, but reaching out to families, and I'll, I'll just say right front wide on asking this question, I know there's been a lot of concern that, or accusations even, that this board doesn't feel that mental health issues are, are a big deal, well, I can tell you right now, I think they're a huge deal, and this morning, it's not only, you know, we all know it because it's there in front of us all the time, but this morning, I happened to meet with some staff members at HCRS, and one of the, one of the more powerful statements that I think I was hearing from staff members who are working in schools, obviously, and with families, is the outreach, and the, and the need to not only have a connection with families, but also a community connection, and we're not talking about towns, we're talking about, about community that supports these families and students, because it's not just our kids, it's obviously beyond that, so I guess I, I would ask the first question about. So I guess I would ask the first question about, are we now doing something we're not under this model and trying to mitigate a situation where we're not meeting the needs of the students at the lowest level, the tier-one level? And is there a model that we're reaching out to families in a way? And are we doing that today?
I mean, we do. I mean, so I'll answer your second question first. We do. I mean, the nurse has set up a food shop with support of several of the people in the building. The nurse just recently organized the boot drive through Stratton Foundation to deliver 43 pairs of boots to students and families at Leland and Gray and their younger siblings in elementary schools as well. We have, you know, a previous nurse, and I think they're in, set up the dental program through a grant from the Stratton Foundation. Mel, last year, with the support of a few people, set up this clothing closet downstairs for students who need free clothing. We do a lot of that work already as part of the school, and we do it primarily through grants and other informal approaches that aren't part of our...
So much of that is around poverty, it sounds like?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
That's important.
And I think, and in other places, I mean, you know, there's, there are a lot of good models for homeschool liaisons as a model exists. And Springfield-Beltz Falls both have added one in the last couple of years. I talked with Bill and Jen a little bit about, Lori, a little bit about the potential of doing that here. I researched a little bit about where they, how they fund that, and they fund that through... See if I can get this right, Lori. Well, no. Well, originally it was the Title IV money, but then secondarily, it was the family engagement money in Title I. And because we're not a big enough entity to get enough, if you've taken enough Title I money, the feds require you to set aside a certain bucket for family engagement. And so some of these schools are bigger, and those communities are using that bucket to fund these types of positions and do that kind of outreach. We aren't big enough to get that forced set-aside money, so we don't have it. And Title IV, we don't, haven't had in years, right? So I think, so there are models like that out there that exist. We aren't doing that. But it's not like we're not doing anything. I mean, we're doing lots of other things. But we're doing it informally, and we're doing it through grants and things like that. So that's the second question. The first question was about the tier-one piece. Yeah, we're not doing it. Just a quick anecdote to highlight that. So my son is a junior. I told him we're gonna start visiting some colleges, and I wondered, you know, what are you thinking about for a career? What's on your mind? And I don't know. So, come on, you must have done some career inventories in middle school or something, right? Like, what have you? Nope. Okay? So we went online and found some career inventories, and he took them, and he went through the process of figuring out some ideas of where he might wanna go, plugged that into the college search, and we were able to figure out some things. And I'm not saying that to say that the staff that we have aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think in the position of this point-two-five that we have existing, that's why the model doesn't work. Point-two-five is assigned to be the middle school counselor. And that's just not enough. Not enough staffing to be able to pull off the needs of what all those kids are gonna have. And then you combine that model with someone who's also administrative, who may have to do discipline from time to time on those same students, and you have this sort of, I'm a disciplinarian, I'm a counselor, like, what am I? And it becomes a challenging model. And so, yes, that work has not been done here in a long time.
As well as the social skills development piece that I see in here?
Nope.
That hasn't been done either?
Not in a tier-one realm, no. It's been done in small group work, but it has not been done in, for the masses, as a general strike approach. And it is common to have that done in middle schools. And I think it's a great way to kind of use, to use the new seventh graders coming together as a way of like our common language at Leland and Gray and how we're gonna be as human beings, how we interact with each other, what it looks like to be good citizens of this school and this community. So there's a lot of ability to embed that work in the middle school years that has not been, has not been taken advantage of. While, the other part of this too, which is, this handout is up here as well, one of the things around the career development piece that we learned just yesterday while we were at the governor's education summit, was talking about the Vermont Career Pathways. And they had sort of created this model at the high school level to talk about what these career pathways could look like. It included job shadowing, internships, co-ops, you know, basically elements of work-based learning, and how that led to what kids do in a post-secondary world. What the model didn't address was middle school. And so this addition of the seventh and eighth grade on the left side of this arrow is something brand-new that the AOE was rolling out and showing us yesterday for the first time, actually still in draft form. When I looked at that, I said, oh, that's exactly part of what my tier-one looks like. It's engaging these kids in these kinds of things, as well as the social-emotional learning piece. So, yes, this is, what I'm describing is in line with what the AOE is talking about around the career pathway piece, and it's gonna be a huge need we have around social-emotional learning at the middle school level. Which in theory will be more proactive and reduce further stuff later on.
Thank you.
All right. We have several board members with questions, but go ahead.
Thanks. I have a question about, you did a really nice job, Megan Alshuler from Brookline, of describing the RTI model and the MTSS. And I'm wondering, I know in general, in the majority of Vermont schools, our populations don't fit into the eighty-fifteen-five. And I was hoping that you could maybe speak a little bit, and maybe Abby can speak to this, about students receiving services at the tier-two and tier-three level, and how the percentages at Leland and Gray compare to the triangle here.
Okay, so caution everybody about, speaking about anything that's below 11, very non-privacy allowed. So, go ahead and answer the question. I just...
I was just asking Lori the same question, because I'm looking at the tier. And Lori has said to me that these 5% in tier-three were IEP students who have counseling in their IEPs, but it doesn't take into consideration 504 and EST. And do their 504 plans and their EST plans have counseling in them? That's how you, that's part of tier-three, right, Meg?
Yeah.
So that's an excellent question, and I was, I mean, this is typical of what you would want, right? But that was my question as well.
Okay.
I was just asking. I was asking for clarification, answer for that.
Okay. Lyndell, you, I think, you had a question next?
Yes, I've heard a very well thought-out, detailed explanation. I have not heard any statement as to how you would support the child with a clinical crisis at the moment in the building. I have not heard that. The suicidal ideation, the cutting, the eating disorder, when it comes to the attention of a teacher. We have, the board has a very clear letter from Janice Broom, who was a school counselor here. She retired 10 years ago, she says. She says licensed school counselors do not provide intensive and ongoing mental health counseling services. Rather, we attempt to refer cases which have that need to licensed mental health counselors, clinical social workers, or psychologists. The American School Counselor Association ethical standards state, we must aim to provide counseling to students in a brief context and support students and families in obtaining outside services if the student needs long-term clinical counseling. Now, I have been very struck by the teachers that have appeared, the previous board members, and talked about the use of clinical services within the building. They are using somebody who is part of the staff, that is known to the youngsters, they know that person. A child will come to them in a class and say, "I just can't go on. I can't keep going with this life." And she can write, then go to a clinical person in the building, which is critical. Another mother sent us a letter, the one that was to be read to the board, that said, "When outside resources are called in, students are billed through their insurance. Some students will have Medicaid, but other students will have insurance carriers that will require copays and high deductibles. This service, mental health service, should not be based on one's ability to pay for their needs being met within the school system. This system will be passing the cost on to hard-working families who may not be able to afford this. Plus, many families may not want to have mental problems disclosed to their insurance, but using a person within the school that the children are familiar with, it will happen. We cannot do away with this service." It's very interesting, on the front page of today's Reformer, there was a big article about incorporating counselors into county and municipalities. And the commissioner of mental health said, "We are not going to have this paid for. It's gonna be paid for by state money. What we're talking about is taking that Medicaid billing piece off the table, because it creates a lot of barriers to people getting access to the care they need." That's the commissioner of mental health for the state of Vermont. I think you're missing a big piece of what's needed right here in this school. We have it. It's working. And as most of you have heard, we say that nauseam. I'm a retired middle school social worker. Joe's heard me say that at least 2,000 times. But I know what the social worker within a building can provide to children working with counselors, but that service must be included for the children here with those acute mental health crises. Somebody they know, somebody that is on the spot and can help them. Then they'd be referred out. But many kids are not gonna come forward with the problem if somebody's gonna be called in to assess it. They need to go to someone they can trust. The teacher will then go. So I really think this piece is missing in this reorganization. I don't quite understand the need for the reorganization. It's not a financial one. And I don't understand the need for it.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I could respond to that. I mean, I guess I just disagree with you about the ability of other professionals in the building to be able to handle a crisis situation. We have a nurse who takes care of kids who are cut...
They're all needed.
We have, well, this is what I'm saying. And so we have people who can handle those kinds of situations, and we have a mental health agency that we can contact with if it needs to be seen for a crisis situation. I mean, I guess I just wanna make sure that we're utilizing people in a way that their skills are designed to be utilized.
And helping kids.
And absolutely. We're all on the same page on that, Lyndell.
I'm not sure.
Well, I really do believe that this is actually far better for kids, overall, for all kids at Leland and Gray.
You're taking away a service that's not offered by anybody else in the school, a very skilled professional service, and you're taking it away. It's used in conjunction with the nurse, the guidance counselors, the teacher. It's all part of a family that the kids are in 24/7, and they need all of us, all of them. So you're taking away a piece, and to give us a point-two is not very helpful.
Howie, did you wanna ask a question?
Yeah. Are we still on the overall budget or discussion, or are we just focused on the...
Well, I would love to talk about any piece of the budget that you would care to bring up. The focus of the budget this entire budget season has been this one counseling reorganization, largely. But please, you know, we're discussing the entire budget.
I wanna know what it's gonna take to get us below the threshold.
$146,000.
Yeah, but I wanna know what our school looks like with another $147,000 cuts, because I don't know that my constituents are gonna be very happy about seeing their taxes go up. What, you know, I know you've done the best you can, but what would it look like if we actually, you know, went beyond what you feel is okay and got that budget down to below the state threshold?
So, I mean, to answer that, I mean, obviously, I think the elephant in the room is that we're talking about staffing.
Yeah.
Because there's no other way to get that kind of dollar amount without looking at staffing. Everything else is bare bones.
Right.
That being said, you know, when you're talking about $146,000, you're talking probably three, two to three FTEs of staff?
So what are we talking about, losing like one teacher out of math, science, and English?
Something like that. I mean, it would be reductions in some areas on whether we would target, this is part of, and this is part of the hard part, Howie, is that like, so we have a lot of, we talked about this a little bit last year, too. We have a lot of like small programs that are unique, but that cost money. They don't serve as many kids maybe as some of the, as an English teacher might serve, but they have a really niche market that they serve. So we're talking about eliminating some of those unique programs. We're talking about reducing some of the core programming and having fewer electives, maybe not AP courses, maybe larger class size, maybe a combination of those things. I mean, I don't know. But that's what we're talking, when you asked the question, that's what we're talking about, that level of reduction.
Well, I mean, I hate to say it, but I would like to see what that looks like, because I don't know that the voters are gonna support a budget that increases taxes so drastically. I'm really concerned about that.
You understand that if we don't want a budget tonight, we don't have our annual meeting when we're supposed to have it.
But we don't vote on a line item budget.
Right. We vote on a bottom line number.
We know what it is to take us under. That would be then left to the administration to decide where those cuts would, you know, because we don't vote on a line item.
I, you know, I've been out of town for a while, so I haven't been part of this whole budget process, but I was really hoping to see something that came in under the state threshold, so we would not be penalized.
So if you remember the directives that you guys gave me and...
I don't think Howie was here for the directives.
Probably wasn't there, so...
Okay, well, then the...
So then you can explain, because the taxpayers are gonna wanna know this.
Right, so the directives that we were, the administration was given around developing the budget was a reduction in the overall budget, anywhere from a reduction, there was no real dollar amount given, up to hitting the threshold. So there was a range, with the threshold being the most dramatic of that range. So clearly, I didn't hit the threshold, but had some reductions and, yeah, so that was...
And the reason, the reasoning behind that is because it was a very dra, at that point, it was a $400,000 cut from the budget to be under the threshold, which would be, you know, huge programmatic cuts. Also knowing that next year, this is a West River District budget, rather than a Leland and Gray budget, with a much different slate of resources to look at. The idea was, do what you can to get spending under control, cut the budget, but don't, you know, impact, have a huge impact. Look at what, and plan for more bringing the budget in line next year as part of the West River District.
Joe, can I just clarify?
And if Lori wants to add to that.
Well, I just wanna clarify that I know Emily was talking about, you know, adding the safety items to the budget. And actually, you would have to reduce it then about $197,000. So if you added the 17.5.
You don't know what that would take us over the excess spending threshold, do you? I mean, I don't know if that's an easy or hard calculation, but right now, we're under this budget that we're looking at tonight, the one that Howie's talking about. We're 548, 42 over the excess. Last year, I think we were 531.
540, yeah, 531.
Something like that, over. I don't know what the significance would be over adding another, and mind you, that was mine.
If you're adding the 17.5?
Yeah.
613.
613 over?
Right.
Maybe it would be helpful to explain how that excess spending threshold penalty is applied.
Well, it's basically just added to your per-pupil cost, so you're paying double taxes on it, is the...
Only in the communities where the, and this isn't like applied, it applies to individuals in the towns where you're over the excess spending.
It applies to all of the union towns.
All the five towns.
Yes, right. Everybody's paying a piece of that penalty, based on their student percentage of how many students they have at Leland and Gray in secondary.
Go ahead, Rob.
My question is, can we get any further funding through the special education budget on top of the 0.2% FTE, sorry? Or is that the max that we can get?
For that position?
For that position.
I'm gonna guess that that's the max. That's what they kinda came back with, I think, based on the kids.
Based on the amount of students on IEPs and...
That require that level of service.
Thank you.
I just got a clarifying question related to that. That was me.
Okay. Your name and your town?
Miriam Albee Brookline. I'm just curious, with the students that are on IEPs that are already kind of under the auspices of the special education department, obviously, they would have access to this 0.2 person. Is it a prerequisite that a student already have been identified and be on an IEP or be on a special program to have access to that person?
Well, I mean, as we get into what the tier-three would look like, students who would be identified as having counseling services on their IEP would be designated having access to them. And a certain percentage of people who are outside that could also have services, who would not identify.
A certain percentage, 20%.
20%. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Bob, that's everything you had? Okay. Anybody else on the board have a question?
I'm just a little confused by that 20%. I thought she, the, not she, the 0.2 could see other kids that needed help, but it's restricted to 20% above what would be on the IEP?
No, it's, if it's going to be funded through special education...
Right, that's what I'm asking.
The caseload, 20% of her caseload can be other students, if it's in their 504 plan or if it's on their educational support system plan.
That, how do you determine the 20%? I'm sorry to belabor this, but the point she's here, how do you get to that figure?
It's a special ed regulation.
It's a special ed regulation.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 how do you get to the actual number that she can see coming through her door?
Based on the total caseload that she'd be able to say.
Based on the total caseload, she has fifteen kids.
If she has to see all the students with the IEPs mandated for counseling, along with, counselors can certainly do that, I agree with you. I'm lost on how you work out, it sounds like a rather restrictive program for her to work under.
All right, so we've got to be careful about numbers again.
Yeah.
But, so, you would have, I think you used the word acute earlier?
Crisis, right.
Right, so you would have a very acute population of students that would have a diagnosed need for a clinician on a therapeutic basis, on an ongoing basis.
But I'm, I think I'm talking about the kids that are not diagnosed and are not identified as-
You're talking about like, today, if I was having a really difficult time, would I be denied access?
Yeah, if you had a very bad day at home, night at home, and you came in and you were suicidal, but you were not designated or designated.
Of course not.
Could you still have access?
Yeah, absolutely.
But how, it might go over 20%, that person might be at 21%.
So that's an eligible cost, and it just, it doesn't get reimbursed, but it can still be used.
Why don't you leave it as it is, and then we don't have this problem.
Okay, any other board questions here? I'll open it, I'll, was that a, okay. We've had a public comment for several meetings now regarding the counseling department reorganization. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak to an issue other than, like, the fact that their taxes are going to go up, or, you know, any other budgetary issue other than the reorganization of the counseling department? Because since we haven't heard from you, I would allow you to speak first. But, okay, so for the reorganization of the counseling department, we have 30 minutes of public comment. I would encourage you to, if you have something new to add, to do that, and I will be timing and allow two minutes per speaker. So, the firsthand, I guess firsthand, Marshall, go ahead.
Yeah, Marshall, look, and I know I have just two minutes, I'll try to be really quick here. So, a couple of things, one is, I put out a petition, I sent it literally to about 25, 30 people, I didn't know if I sent from Williamsville, and it just kind of took off on its own, that people passed it on, passed it on, passed it on. That's why we have, I think in part, so many people here. This is, we got 480 signatures, roughly 202 of those are voters, somewhere almost close to 400. Joe, are you, are you in here?
Yeah.
Okay, almost 400 are members of the communities, they might be Leland and Gray alumni or students now. So it's an overwhelming community response. There was also a lot of comments, obviously, in two minutes, I don't have time to read them, but there were three basic types of comments, there were 87 comments. One was about how Susan had been particularly helpful.
I'm going to caution you, this is about position, not a person. If you do it again, it's out of, I'll rule you out of order and I'll ask you to stop speaking. Really, we need to make this the position, not the person.
Okay, the school social worker helps them or their child, how the current person in the position was unusually talented at what they did, this is from multiple references from professionals, and how important it is to have a school social worker during these stressful times. There are many statistics to back this up, that the rates of suicidality, depression are through the roof. I also did some statistics that looked at, there is metadata that shows that having a school social worker position can include graduation tendence and credit earns, somewhere in the range of 18 to 21%. That ends up being real dollars in our budget. When we lose kids, we lose funding. So I believe that the position almost pays for itself by having kids stay in the school. When you look at the, if you go to the American School Counselor Association, they, they say they can do counseling, but you, it's very clear from their website that it's much more focused on-
That's two minutes, if you could wrap it up first.
Well, you know, Joe, I've put in roughly probably 20 to 30 hours of work, so if I could, if someone could loan me another minute of their time-
I'd like to give them my minutes.
There's not, we're not going to give minutes.
Bob, I, I mean, but-
Please, Joe, I mean, before we wrap it up.
If you'd be kind enough, I really put a lot of work into this. I want, I don't want to just talk generalities, which we before, and I've got a lot of statistics, and I think they're relevant. When you go to those websites, the ratios for a counselor or a school social worker are exactly the same, 251 to 1. According to National Statistics, Vermont has a higher ratio of counselor to students than any other state in the country except for Wyoming, almost twice as much as what the own association says is needed. And further, I mean, just the needs of the students are there. I mean, and so why not have the best person with that position to address counseling? It's not someone who might have some training, but someone who is thoroughly trained in it and very experienced. And last, I would just like to say, if you look at the community turnout, the number of people here, what message are we sending to the community if we ignore this? This is an overwhelming response, this is an incredible amount of sentiment. So the message we're sending is, either if we don't vote for this, I'm guessing, is, you know, we don't care what the community thinks, A, or B, the people that are the most passionate about this, what are they going to say about Leland and Gray? Well, we tried to get them to see the important community needs, they don't seem to be addressing it. And last, I don't see how this budget's going to pass. If the people in this room are upset about the way you're spending the money, and you add to it the people that are already going to be against the budget, it seems like it's dead in the water. Thank you so much for letting me go. And I have, I have copies of the work statistics I'll pass out, and the website, and I'm happy to forward signatures and whatever you want to see.
Point of order?
Point of order? Joe, I would say, you know, there's a lot of people here, nobody likes to go along meetings. However, we're interested in participatory democracy. Boards are always begging people to come to their meetings. So when people come to a meeting, they've done their homework, they're working really hard, to limit them to two minutes is a slap in the face.
So would you suggest as I just let everyone speak, we'll just go down the road, let everyone speak as long as they want, and then do our thing?
Remember, last year, there were 150 people in that building.
And we've had to sign up for that, and we've limited it to an hour.
That's right, we had to sign up, we had three minutes, so we reduced this to two.
And we probably have a third of that, so-
And why don't we care about really having participatory democracy, where people are actually speaking to the representative people who work for them? You work for us. You can decide how you want to run your meeting, but if you want to put your actions behind your talk, which is about, please come to our meetings, please support us, then you really need to be able to listen to us when we come.
If everyone in the room is here to say the same thing, we've heard you-
We won't know until we hear it.
That's not the point of democracy. That is very, very-
That feels very disrespectful.
Call on this person.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I, believe me, I don't want to take more than two minutes.
Name it.
I'm not a big talker for the groups.
Name it.
Susan Wagner. So, so my daughter went through-
And your town?
New Brook, Newfane, and she went through Leland and Gray. I've been in the district for a long time. I come in one day a week and work and see kids outside, you know, individually. And so I guess I want to just give a little context for it. I think we're in a lot of trouble in our lives because of the incredible stressors, the economic, this social media thing that is robbing kids of reasonable ability to be kids, the drugs, the poverty. And so I also think that the relationships that kids form, and I want to say that I think everybody in Leland and Gray has an area of expertise, and I honor the work that they do. So this isn't that anybody's better than anybody else, but everybody has a piece of caring about kids, honoring kids, and doing the work that they can do to support our community and support our kids, okay? So I just want to make sure, but I do want to talk a little bit, I'm sorry, about the school social worker position, because a lot of the research shows that if someone's within the system and can say, "Good morning, you look really cute today," make a joke, it's the day-to-day familiarity with someone that you build trust. I see adults who went to school, who got good grades, who didn't get good grades, who were broken individuals because they never were able to talk about what was tearing them apart inside. And so I think that the school social worker, along with everybody else, I mean, not to dismiss everybody else, has a different area of expertise. The counseling, the social emotional stuff you talk about is really important, the nurse's job is really important, but if kids are in trauma, or kids are in their emotional brain, or kids cannot repair emotional relational disruption, they can't learn. So I'm just saying that the opportunity to, I mean, so the school social worker can communicate ways that I can't, because I'm not in the system, I can't get to all the meetings, but a teacher can go to the school social worker and stop something in the middle of a crisis. They do have an ability to assess crisis, assess family situations. I mean, everybody has a different expertise. I'm looking at everybody here who has an expertise, but that's a specific expertise to identify and move in, and then refer out if it's essential. But I do think that embedded within the community and the safety, and also the groups, I do, the groups, the social groups, there are social skills groups, then there are process groups that help kids develop their own voice and support the voice of other kids, so that when they go into the halls and in the school, they provide support to the kids in the group. I have kids in my group who help each other out. They know someone's in trouble, they say, you know, if you're having a hard time, come talk to me. So I'm just saying that the relationship piece and all the research with the neurons, you know, firing away, and the nervous system, that if you can make attachments that can be repaired, we want our kids to be successful and to be able to learn and to thrive, and this is one way that helps them, that relational connection. And the teachers do it, the counseling department does it, principal does it, but I do think that this piece also is really important. Am I two minutes up? Because I'm running this-
About five.
I have a question, I'm a little confused.
Your name?
I'm Laura, I'm from Jamaica, and I guess from the way Bob spoke about it, it seemed like that position, there was still going to be somebody here doing that?
Doing what?
Doing what the person who does it now does, the social worker in school.
Yes.
There still is going to be a person.
Yes.
So it's going to be, I'm confused about, because you had me, when Bob was speaking, I was thinking, oh, this, this looks fine, but am I missing, I'm missing something, I think, and maybe somebody can answer that. What's the difference?
There's going to be, Bob can answer that.
Well, I, I, okay. If somebody else is down on that, too. I would like to have maybe somebody else respond to it, because I did hear your explanation, and it seemed to be making sense on paper, like it looked good, like better things were going to happen, according to your diagram. But I have had experience in a school with the social worker that really helped my family and my child, and it was incredibly important. And if that position is gone, I don't want my child going here anymore. I'll leave, go to another school. If that's not available.
The position still exists, it doesn't exist in the same-
Okay, so I'd like maybe, could somebody else in the audience-
Amount of, of employment. Sure, go ahead, Margaret.
Sure, you've heard from me a lot, I know you're dying to hear from me again. I'm Margaret Winberger from Newfane, and I just want to clarify, what Bob said about counselors being able to counsel students is not what he's really suggesting, they cannot do what the school social worker does. They can, as you've put it before, Bob, pat a kid on the back who's having a rough day, get him back into class. They cannot be aware of the very, very deep work that that child needs to do. They are, they cannot do it, the children do not go to the counselors now, they go to the school social worker, who can provide ongoing, deep psychotherapy in a time when rates of depression and anxiety and suicidality among young people, as of two extremely important studies have just shown, including the CDC and Columbia University, are through the roof, and we've had almost every teacher in this school say that they need the school social worker, and we have had the retired nurse and the retired counselor who were here when the school social worker started, say what an incredible relief it was to have her here. And we've had teachers saying that they could not do their job, and yet you keep saying over and over again, oh, I think counselors can do that. They can't, they just can't. It's not true, people, it's not true.
You didn't even answer the question. Bob, would you like to answer the question?
What he's saying, the counselors could do it.
I don't answer the question.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, I mean, I guess I just disagree with Margaret, I think, I think we are continually underestimating the skills and training that our school counselors have, because we're basing our understanding on an antiquated model, and I don't really have much more to say, I, we're people with master's degrees in counseling, I mean, I think that speaks to itself, and are they doing psychotherapy? Absolutely not, nor do I want them to be. But, but they're providing counseling in small group and individual counseling for kids, and that's, that's the gap that we're talking about. I don't disagree that the needs are out there, I think the needs are out there, which is why my proposal includes an increase in staffing to help address that and be more proactive.
Thanks. You standing up?
Yes, my name is Peggy O'Neil, I'm from Newfane, and I look at this triangle, the 80%, the 15, and the 5, and I can't put my daughter anywhere in that triangle. She doesn't have any type of label, and that's what this triangle seems to be about. She has a door going to the position that has been open for her. She's a straight A student, never brought home anything less than an A, she plays two sports, she's in plays, she's in Above the Influence, she is a rock star for your school, and she doesn't want to be here without the support and the access of the bond, the relationship she has with this position right here. And she doesn't fit anywhere in here, and if she were stuffed into a class, which it sounds like what's going to happen, they told her how to be a good person, or where she should go to college, or how to think, she'd be bored to tears by some random counselor. She has a relationship with someone that she trusts, a door that's open, and she doesn't have a label, and she doesn't need it. She wants it. And if you take away this person from my door, you fail my door.
Susan Gunther Moore, Newfane, school social worker. I want to address Laura's question. I've been offered .2 to one day, working with special education students, many of whom I see now. 20% of students not on IEPs could also be seen by me if there were a way to do that. It's hard to imagine, I could be in a group, I could have a group with maybe, you know, if it were a group of six children, almost one of them could be non-IEPs, you know, if you look at them, you could do it in different ways with math, but, you know, so that's, that's what it is. I do not think that I would be able to be available, and I do wonder if I were in the building and one of the students I see now who's not on an IEP needed me, I would have to say no. And that, that feels kind of horrible, actually, but I think that, does that answer it kind of, Bob? Lisbon?
I think I gave my answer, I, so.
You won't be able to see as many, as many kids as you want.
I think if there's, if there's a student in crisis situation, we're going to, we're going to involve the schools, I mean, there's no way around that.
But it would not be made known, because a student may not want to make it known to the administration that they're in a crisis, they may just want to go see, if you were going, but you wouldn't be. I also want to say that Janice, my former colleague, she was here when I first started, and we had a wonderful working relationship, and there were two full-time counselors here at that time, and more students, to be told. And she was thrilled that there was someone here who could see the students that she couldn't see because she wasn't in a position to offer psychotherapy, knowing that many of the students whom she might recommend go out, wouldn't go out. And so you, you get a wonderful flow of need and- And so you get a wonderful flow of need and delivery of service with a school social worker in combination with school counselors. So there were two at the time Janice was here, and right now we've had one point two five. I agree, we need more. School family outreach, I think, is an issue. I would like to address it. I feel like there are many families in the room who the school social worker has reached out to. I think that people here would talk about that. It's not something that I talk about because it's a confidential thing. But I do think some of that happens. I wish more of it could happen. And with a word from the administration, I would be happy to talk about how that could I also want to talk about the tier one response. I agree that we have not done a great job at taking care of our tier one students. But I do want everybody to recognize that with the former administration, there was a carefully designed program that involved advisory and school counselors and the school social worker in providing each week a topic that would then be delivered with a teacher who they would have for the next six years, grappling with issues of mental health, of, you know, whatever the issue might be, developing relationships with each other. That was a tier one, one of the tier one offerings that we were really proud of. And this year, with the change in the middle school and the change in how the music department, I mean, I'm glad the music department is alive again, I really am, and I'm glad that the teachers are seeing students more. But it has meant that the seventh and eighth grade, with whom I worked, and the other schools in our district, have not been able to have a real advisory. And that is a problem in terms of the relationships that they learn or don't learn to develop with an adult, that we had always hoped would happen. So I feel like circumstances, Bob's wish to figure out how to manage one thing over another, has led us to this. I'm not blaming Bob for that, but I think that we did have a reasonable program, and it has fallen away. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Kim Friedman, South Newfane, since we may not all have a chance to speak tonight, I would be interested in seeing the hands raised of everybody who's here, because they are concerned about the proposed cut in the school social worker. Thank you.
Tristan Johnson, Newfane, I have three points I'd like to make. One, first of all, Lyndle, I thank you very much for the compliment you made about the importance of personal connection and the trust in personal connection that allows an open door for a student to believe that there's help on the other side. The other comment I have is that I'm appalled that the personal element of the school has been reduced to a triangle with percentages, rather than a discussion about the individuals with critical needs. And I say that because in the last three weeks, we've had editorial and newspaper articles by Senator Leahy, Senator Sanders, and one just recently by Sedensky from the National Newspaper System, all about the critical crises hitting kids. The story here is about kids. The story isn't about a structure, and the flexibility to adapt to what kids need is terribly important. I did a very quick sort of labor analysis of this pyramid, and I don't see how you could possibly address, in the hours that would be assigned, to a 5% tier, to the kids who have needs here. Thank you.
I'm Jean Pollak, and I'd like to comment as a psychotherapist in private practice. I'm from Williamsville, Newfane. I'd like to comment as a psychotherapist in private practice for 25 years and a resident here for 17. To my mind, the word health and safety that came up earlier is really critical in terms of what we're talking about. I really agree with what Janice Broom was quoted to have said earlier by one of you board members, I'm sorry, I don't remember who. I do not agree about what Bob said about the skill set of guidance counselors, school counselors now compared to a social workers. I see that very differently. I am very concerned about the removal of the position of social worker. A clinically trained social worker or clinician who's embedded in the family life, as you had spoken to, ma'am, the family life of a rural school is vital to the flourishing of that school and of that school's community. The social worker provides individual counseling groups to students, advises teachers, and works with some of the families. To begin with, I do not believe those skill sets can be farmed out in any comprehensive fashion to outside mental health providers like myself, or to the guidance, to the school counselors, excuse me. Referring out, I can assure you as a clinician who has done a bit of this work over the years, that some of these services are going to fall by the wayside if the bulk of the clinical services are farmed out. Imagine a few clinicians in this community, or in the Brattleboro area, knowing some number of the students well, and compare this to the social worker position as it is now, or even increased from three days, working within the school, knowing not just some of the students well, but knowing the struggles of that student's peers, knowing the struggles and strengths within the community of that school, and knowing not just, and having a working relationship with the teachers and the staff of that student. There's a huge difference there. Personally, I had to work to reinvent that wheel every time I worked with a student when I was an outside clinician. So now I want to talk about the groups offered by the social worker. Having run groups for teens for years is well documented, how groups are invaluable for teens, and it's all very well researched. The challenge is getting teens to attend these groups. An outside clinician, a once a day, a once a week clinician, will never make that happen. The social worker is making this happen. Apparently, she runs 10 groups attended by some 50 students. That is worth its weight in gold to those of us in this community, to the social milieu of this community. Without that, the options are just not, they are going to fall short, there is no question in my mind. I'm going to leave out a few other things I was going to say. I would add that the social work is available for availability for emerging situations and emergency. How often does Leland and Gray have something like that? I would say quite often, knowing other people have spoken to that, though, that she's going to be available. I can tell you that with everybody taking insurance these days, everybody having insurance these days, clinicians are swamped. I'm going to say about more about that in a minute, though. I want to throw into this mix what someone else said, Margaret, I think.
You're way over your two minutes.
Yeah. I'm a professional in this community who deals with these kind of cases, and I really, I think I would like to be able to just finish for another two minutes, if that's okay?
I would like to.
If you throw into this mix the prevalence of depression, anxiety, drug and alcohol issues faced by students these days, the families of these students these days, I do not mean to be rude when I say that I think it is irresponsible to omit this position and expect the school counselors and outside therapists to be able to pick up this slack in anything other than a piecemeal fashion. Think of your own child. It's one thing to say that your child can receive these services from therapists in the community or from someone who's there once a week. It is quite another to find a therapist who has an opening before the next three weeks, not to mention a seasoned clinician for which you might wait six to eight weeks, and who's willing to restrict, accept the restrictions of the state plan, or that the student has no money to pay for the deductible. When you mention that your child is depressed, you want your child to be in that position? Or do you want to know there is someone in that school on site who's going to intervene, who will triage, who will do all of that, and has the skill set to understand psychopathology in a way that the school counselors are not expected to know? That is, it's not fair to, you're going to burn out your school counselors. And the last thing I would add is that clearly, there's 400-something people who obviously are very, very concerned, but I also know this process has left a lot of scars, I am certain, for Bob and for the principal and for the school counselor. So the social worker. So should the social worker position be kept? I strongly recommend that there be a restorative justice person from outside the community brought in to help the school social worker and the principal rework and come back to a place where they can actually really work together effectively. This has been a very difficult process for both of them. And imagine the message that gives to the school community, that not only the kids have problems, but parents have problems, too, and that the parents of this community are going to get help they need to be able to work together again really, really well. That is a win-win for everybody. Thank you, I'm done.
I see the hand, Debbie.
I have a whole lot of statistics here that I'm not going to say, and a whole lot of stories about school social workers, as well as school counselors providing incredible services. What I can speak to that I'm not sure anyone in this room can is that I'm a teacher, I'm Megan Altrich of Brookline. I'm a teacher in the Brattleboro town, and we have, the school that I work in has approximately 230 students. As I'm sure many people are aware of the level of trauma and adverse childhood experiences, and we're all, as educators, being trained out of our ears about what goes on with trauma and building resiliency. That being said, what the school where I work has done at their last school board meeting was there is a full-time school counselor who works very closely with a full-time clinician, both onsite every single day, and they have asked the board to add a social worker position. And so in my conversations with the school counselor and the school clinician, they are saying, and they are highly trained, exceptionally skilled individuals at what they do, they are saying, we, the two of us, this counseling team, we need a social worker in our school, full-time, for fewer students than are here at Leland and Gray. And I just think that that is something, as a community, that we need to consider, and that as a board and as a school, that needs to be considered. I understand there are budgetary restrictions, but I'm also a parent of two students who will conceivably, maybe, one day attend Leland and Gray. And I believe strongly in all of the tier one that you have put in here, but I also see firsthand in my classroom and in my home, the effects of the tier two and the tier three students who need those supports, and what happens if they go unmet. I'm not calling an outside service to help me with the kid who's screaming and rocking in the corner of my classroom. This is not an uncommon thing to happen. I'm sure you guys are aware of this. I don't know, many people in this room are very aware of this. My concern is that in these conversations, people are saying, school counselors can't, school counselors can't. There's so much that they can do, and there's so much that they do do, but it's like saying, we're going to hire a brain surgeon to do heart surgery, that's not what you do. You get a brain surgeon to do brain surgery, you get a heart surgeon to do heart surgery because you wouldn't have it another way. I love, when I think about my kids being at this school, the idea that there would be a full-time counselor, school counselor for middle school, because the fact that the middle school is so closely tied with high school is concerning to me as a parent, and having someone whose job it is to oversee that is crucial. But I also think about my child, my children, and then, they are not immune to experiencing trauma, because we have a healthy home. That does not make them immune to experiencing trauma, and which could potentially open up their availability or their need for long-term therapeutic services, which that counselor is not going to provide. And not because they can't, because they're not smart enough, but because that's not their job title. Just like as classroom teacher, it's not in my job title, it's not in my job description to do the counseling services or the therapy services. I might be the best teacher in the world, but you're not going to hire me to do therapy, yet. Maybe with a few more degrees, but that's what I'm saying. What I'm hoping to say here is that I'm hoping that we're not putting down one profession while building up another, and that's not. But the position of a school social worker, having someone onsite, you look at the IRBS, you look at the developmental assets, having someone with kids every day, that one adult makes the difference. And I was also, I don't know if anyone on the board knows this, but some of you do, I also had the unique experience to spend a year as part of the counseling department here at Leland and Gray as the SAP counselor, on a short hiatus with young children from being a classroom teacher, and I saw firsthand a whole lot more than 5% of the school affected positively by the school social worker. And the number of crises that occurs in that one year make it hard for me to speak about this. And so when I think about what this community needs and what this school needs, and we compare it to 10 miles, 12 miles down the road, we have great needs here, and it is not just the kids who are receiving IEP services or on 504s or make it to the EST. Those are not the only kids that need support. I had the former administration come to me and say, you know, these kids aren't accessing services, what can you do? Like, we need someone here who can do therapy. We need someone here who can respond to a crisis in the moment, not just to say, hey, this kid needs this, and then go to an outside service, but be there in the moment. And I was here in those moments when things happened, and it is necessary. I want my kid in class next to someone who's getting support. I see it in my own classroom with the parents that I work with, those parents are not making that phone call, they are not getting the services outside of school. And from what I understand in conversation with the school counselors in Brattleboro is that there are no clinicians that have immediate openings in Brattleboro, and no clinicians here who have immediately, immediate openings. So when I look at this, I feel excited that the new administration is adding counseling. I think that's awesome, and I want that. I feel really concerned that point four is the decline in the amount of therapeutic services, because there's not going to be an increase in clinical support from outside because it doesn't exist. And if it's not happening from inside, where is it going to come from? Because the number of students who need it is not 5%. And when I asked for that, I didn't want you to say, 70, you know, like 35 students are on IEPs, I know you can't say that, but I'm wondering, because I am intimately exposed to the triangle on a daily basis, when I look at the data, both academically and behaviorally in my classroom and in my school, and from what I know from the population that is here, it's not that much different. And I know that our little red top tier, we're not, it doesn't look like this, and my hunch is that it doesn't here either. And so my assumption is that whatever Special Life can fund, because they're strapped, too, they're saying, don't identify more kids, get them on 504s, get them on ESTs, get them on other plans, because the state's not going to give us the money to support these kids anymore. Special Life can't be the funding for mental health.
So we've gone beyond the 30 minutes, Gerald.
Gerald Julius Cusay, Newfane, I'm also a teacher here at Leland and Gray, and I wanted to read a statement of support that was signed by 32 of the Leland and Gray educators. This came out of what we have as our community council meeting, where the faculty meets with common planning time. We meet once a week. In all of the meetings over the course of the few months, there's been a lot of discussion about losing the position of the social worker, and so a statement was generated, and so I'll read that to hand into you. And so it says, "We, the undersigned educators at Leland and Gray, ask the board to continue to fund a school social worker position. At this time in our community, mental health needs are great and our educational experience..." At this time in our community, mental health needs are great, and our educational expertise needs the assistance of a fully credentialed and professional social worker." So the statement I'll give to you, Margaret, can you hand that in, please? Signed by 32 educators, and as I say, it came out of the discussions, our community council, faculty group, and that those of us who see these kids every day, we want to support Bob in asking you to please ask the board to consider putting the position back in, and I know I personally have asked before, I totally appreciate Lori's expertise in presenting the budget as we have, as you have, to present it in ways where both the Point Four position is put back in, and also to consider it as a full-time position. And I know it feels horrible for everybody who's having to pay the extra in taxes and what you gave to us on a $200,000 property, and what that means for every individual, but when it comes down to hundreds of dollars, and for this position to be put back in Point Four, or to be put back in as, to be increased to a full-time position with the special ed, I'm sure anyone who has had their child or families experience the trauma, the pain, the horror of what's going on in our communities, it is money well worth spent. And so.
Hi, Laura Pelloway, New Fane. I'll keep my comments really brief. I did send a letter to Joe, and so I would hope that would get sent to all, all of you on the board. Most people have said what I have to say, but I am a psychotherapist in the community, and I was a school-based social worker, so I have some unique experience to speak to this. I, I think having the level of expertise of a clinical social worker is invaluable to a school, and to have them at the school embedded makes a huge difference to the relationship building that you can get. And this is not at all to put down school counselors. School counselors are valuable, needed, talented, and they should, if they, you know, I'm sure they would want, to work in collaboration with a school clinical social worker. I guess one thing that I just really feel I need to say also, as a parent in this community who has a child in the high school, and one who may be coming to the school next year, that I'm, I'm really stunned that we are talking about a cut to social work services. I actually thought, honestly, I guess naively, that we would be having a conversation about adding social work hours. You know, recently in the newspaper, in the local newspaper in November, there was an article about the W., Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union adding social work hours. My husband's school in Chester just added social work hours. I think they're, yeah, well, I almost said the exact number, but they added hours. That's the trend that's happening for very good reasons that people in this meeting have already named, you know, and that are in the media right now. It feels backwards, what we're doing. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Morgan Madabi. I live in New Fane, and I'm an alumni of Leland and Gray, graduated in 2009, and I speak in support of the continuation and even expansion of the school social work position, which everyone has voiced. I want to speak to actually the piece here about the missing, the beneficial services that are not met around proactive instruction around social skills and career development, and thinking about the possibility of expanding the school's social work position to one FTE, and finding creative ways to involve those pieces in other aspects of the school. When I think about my experience as a student here, I think about career development and access to counselors and career guidance as really, really minimal. I think of them as sort of pointed moments, but think, I think it would have been really beneficial in talking to my siblings who are younger than me and peers at the time, thinking about integrating that across the experience, in the classroom, you know, in the health and wellness classes, that this doesn't have to just come from a counselor position, but we can think of other ways to bring career readiness, to bring social emotional learning, to bring social skills practice throughout, that doesn't require cutting the school social work position.
You know, I'd really like to support that. It's like spreading it throughout. I thought it was well said.
In the interest of compromise, could we put back one of the two days that are being cut, what would the effect on the budget be, since we're already in the, everybody's getting a tax increase realm of budgeting? You know, if we were to just leave the two school counselors in and keep the school social worker at Point Four instead of Point Two, would that, would that be a compromise that, that the community would be willing to support our budget over?
No, no.
The compromise is everyone wants more than Point Six. Point Six is a compromise.
There's your answer, Howie. Yes, you in the back?
My name's Pamela, and I live in New Fane, and I work in the, at the nursing school in Brattleboro, and I just want to underscore things some of the professionals have already said, which is that we're facing a crisis that a lot of you know, in the healthcare field in every aspect. And just to illustrate, some children in crisis situations have ended up living in the emergency room for a week. That's a real, that's one story. So that's the reality. We have a, we're having a crisis for adults and children already in this moment, addressing their needs. And I can also speak about school nurses, because the principals mentioned school nurses, and I can say, from the school nurses that I've been acquainted with, they are so busy, if you read what they do in one day, as many of you know, they are barely meeting the needs of, whether it's a medical need such as diabetes, giving a coat to a child in poverty who doesn't have a coat, addressing the lice on a child's hair because their parents aren't in a situation to be able to address it. A school nurse, as, just to underscore what someone says, because you've mentioned that several times, the principal has, has no way, the time to address the mental health concerns. They're so busy just addressing the, the basic minimal health concerns, that, again, it's like what someone said, brain surgery and heart surgery, you can't ask a school nurse unless you had a mental health-trained school nurse, whose specific role was just to do that. Anyway, I just want to say, I do feel that the word compromise is very disappointing, that it comes up at the end of this very powerful presentation by very articulate and passionate people in this community, and I'm hoping the bigger message is being heard, which is, in these very extraordinary, difficult times, opiate use up and everything, you want more, not less, not, not a compromise. So, thanks.
Thanks, did the, New Fane. I would just like to, and I can make this brief, because most of my points have been made, but I would like to really emphasize what Pamela just said. You know, I've been at this school for 20 years. I come in every morning, I teach a woodshop class, and I'm gone. So I have a very small role here, but I've been here for a long time. I've never seen this community and this school in this condition that we're in right now. Every day when I come to school now, I have my Narcan in my pocket, because there's a really good chance, well, there's not a really good chance, there is a chance, and we already have a couple of people in the school who are trained with it. We have to have people trained in the school to do an overdose reversal. That didn't happen 10 years ago. It certainly didn't happen 20 years ago. We have kids who are sleeping on their friends' couches because their parents are OD'd, or not OD'd, they're just super high on opiates. Those kids are not going to be qualified for special ed. They're not going to be on the train to be seen by a social worker, but they need the social worker every bit as much. I really applaud Bob, I applaud like this Tier One thing, I think that's what somebody else had too, I think there's a great, we need to do that. We need to reach out to all these kids, but we can't do it at the expense of cutting the very rooted underpinning of those ones who are the most fragile. And, and, and this group, we can, we can do really wonderful things, but we have to keep that basis there. And it seems like, why are we doing this? We're doing, we're supposed, we're supposed to equalize our schools. If we wanted to do what the state wanted to do, to equalize our school, we would have to cut even more positions. Our school would be more unequal than ever. So we know, as Howie eloquently pointed out many a time, that the funding formula has nothing to do with equalization, has to do with the concept of Montpelier. Well, right now, we're facing a crisis in our community, and we are really sort of done with being told that we can't spend money on things that are important, like our children, and like our children's mental health. And last year, there was a, there was debate about cutting positions, and we came, lots of people came, and they said, "We will show you how much support we give you." And if you remember, when the vote came, and this was a vote that included a big thing on the ballot, this was 12% over whatever, you know, it had the big scare language as designed by the state, in spite of that, every single town in this district voted for that budget, and the overall vote, I believe, was close to two to one. That's support of your community. So who do you want to support? Your community, who you work for, who says, "We understand that the school needs this now. We understand that it's going to cost us more money, and we're not only willing to do it, we're willing to make sure that the whole community understands the situation and is on board with you." Or are we just going to listen to Governor Scott and Rebecca Holcomb say, "You know, you're going to have to cut some services?" No. We need exactly what Bob has asked for, and then we need that, those Point Four added back, so we have the same social worker situation we had before. Then we've got a chance to make this, this a great school. Yesterday, you were in somewhere with Rebecca Holcomb, right? Well, you and a lot of other people. So, so what were you talking about? You're talking about college ready, how can we get more of my kids to go to college? You get them to go to college by having them ready to learn, by having them in a social state of mind that they can take in learning, that they can be with their peers, that they can, they can interact with their teachers in an appropriate fashion. We need every single support that we can possibly do. So, everything is good here, except reducing the social worker. I'm, I'm really imploring upon you to, to put the Point Four back in, and be glad that it's not Point Six, so you save a little money there. Because I, my own personal life, I've stopped going along with things. So like, I will not.
I know you predicted.
But I'm just saying, like, I, I won't be able to vote for this budget, and I'll probably have to work against it, and that's insane. That's absolute insanity.
So, sir, you haven't spoken once.
Brief. Bruce Mallon from Brookline. I never went to school here, from Southern Westchester County, like Lyndle, and I empathize with what Howie had to say about what the problem is with the taxes. And we spent an hour talking about the whole thing, filling it in, and I sat here quietly and listened to your argument. And I think, quite honestly, after everything I've heard, it's really lopsided. You need a full-time social worker. You're not going to get it, but I think that's.
You've already spoken once. We're well past the half hour.
Oh, it's okay. It's just a very quick thing to say. I think you're going to lose a lot of people at your school. I've heard people say, "My kids might go here." I know people that have left here, and I know people that are thinking about leaving here, and we don't want to. This is our community, we live in these towns, but people are seeking other high schools to go to, and you keep stripping it down. I know it costs money, but we've got to find a way. So you're going to lose your school.
Let Emma speak, and then, because she had her hand up before you.
So, I just want to say that everything you're saying rings a bell with me. I totally understand about our needs and our growing needs. In fact, I, I feel very frustrated on a regular basis, because the services are hard to come by for our students and our families and our communities, and there are a lot of reasons for that. We have a system in place here that is built to support our children and our families, and as a school board, we have a job to do, and part of that job is to find a budget that meets the needs of our kids. We are laypeople, we are not educators. We have to do our very best to hire professional folks who do their very best to make sure that the needs of our kids are being met. As we've been hearing this, and this isn't, somebody mentioned it before, this isn't the first time that this recommendation has come from our administration, and I, I don't take that lightly. I can't take that lightly as a school board member, when administration comes to us two years in a row saying, "We're not meeting the needs of our kids," and I have, I'm proposing a new model. If I, as a school board member, says I don't trust your judgment on this, you know, and I, I've got to tell you, the administrators we have sitting here, we have two principals of the year, I believe, and I, so they're not just folks we just hired, we have people who have long-time connections to our communities and understand education and our children. And it has absolutely nothing to do with all the voices I'm hearing here, where I am really struggling with saying to my administration, who I have to trust to do the right thing for our kids and for our communities, our families, to say, "You're not right," and that people who are speaking a different, saying something different for two years in a row, our administration doesn't know as well as all the rest of you. And I, I really am struggling with that, because what happens the next time if something comes along, you know, and, and we suddenly can't trust our administration anymore? And I, I'm really having a hard time with that.
Excuse me, I have to, tonight's a fun, I have to respond.
No, no, I really actually don't want to hear from anyone else. I'm trying to explain, don't take me seriously on that one, on that not wanting to hear. I want to hear, I've been hearing from you a really long time. Bob had his hand up, I'd really like to hear his response to that, because I'm hoping he will be able to help you with that.
Well, I mean, I guess I'll probably start by saying, I don't, from the standpoint of, like, thinking about what the needs are of the community, and sort of the feeling that, that there's a lot of crisis and trauma, and the suggestion that my idea isn't going to be able to reach the needs of all kids, like, I guess I can agree, disagree with members of the community who say that. I think that I worked in a place, when I was in Springfield, that I think, with all respect to how tough the situations are here, was way tougher. I have experienced seeing an environment that where kids were, were more kids. We talked, someone mentioned the idea of the 5%, and whether it was more. Yep, I've been in those places, I've seen places that are, that are, or softened, so maybe that guides my perspective around how I view the situation here. The second part I want to add to that is, I think, you know, and thank you only for having faith in me, I think that's important, that's a good thing. I want the community to have faith in me, as well, as having the board have faith in me. I, I don't know if I haven't done a good job explaining it, or whether we really, whether it's just a feeling that the situation is way more dramatic than how I believe it is. I'm not sure what that difference or disconnect is. I really think there is a disconnect around the school counselor piece, and that's okay, we can agree, disagree on that. All that being said, I was given the directive to create a budget that met certain parameters, it gave me a range to work within. I mean, I, I'm not, I guess, when I come back to the last year, Dan mentioned last year, and a lot of people showed up, and, and things were added back to the budget, specific line items. The board chose to do it that way rather than thinking about the bottom line, they just, there were certain things that were specifically wanted to make sure were added back in based on the community's request. added back in based on the community's requests. You know, it's a challenging situation to be in, because, for one, I want to say that if there's an impression from the community that I don't, that I'm not concerned with our students' well-being mentally, that's a huge problem for me. Because the way I'm approaching this is I'm really thinking that I'm trying to address it in a better way. So, like, clearly there's a disconnect, because I don't, I don't want that to be how people leave this meeting, thinking that I'm not, that I'm not trying to serve the needs of the kids. Because I could tell you right now, in all the schools I've worked in, as an assistant principal, as a principal, and even here, working with Janice when I was a teacher, hand in glove with the counseling staff, all of them, whether it's nurses, counselors, social workers, the whole bit, like, that's been my experience, that's how I've operated. I have the utmost respect for what they do. I couldn't think of operating a school in any other way. So in that vein, I guess what I would say is, I feel like I did what I was asked to do as far as developing a budget. That being said, if the community is pushing for money to be added back in, I'm not a taxpayer in this community. So it's not going to impact me in that regard. If you're asking me would I turn down the board's willingness to add something back in and give me more resources, no, I would not. I'm not going to say, "No, don't give me additional resources. Figure out a way to use them." And so that's the tough part for me, because I feel like I've addressed what the board asked me to do. I feel like there's still a disconnect around the community piece, and I don't know how to respond to that, but I'm certainly not going to turn down additional resources. I don't want to leave the board out to hang the dry on that either, thinking that I should be the one making the recommendation around what happens. I should be the one being the educational leader of the school. You can't have a community run a school, right? But at the same time, they're the ones that populate the school, they're the ones that fund the school. I don't know. I don't know the answer. I guess I would not be personally offended and feel like I wasn't trusted if something was put back in and gave me more resources. At the same time, I feel like if the discussion was, "I need to figure out something else to reduce to make that happen," that would be a huge challenge for me, to go back to the building and look someone else in the eye and explain to them why their job's being reduced, because the community came out and supported this one position? And then it'll lead back to where, you know what I mean? Like, how's that, how far do you go down that road? And secondly, I think that the plan, a lot of people have mentioned this, the plan around the tier one piece, despite one common or not liking triangles, I feel like that's a good plan. And I feel like having that second counselor is important. So I don't want that to be, I don't want that to be a swap-out either. Like, I feel like that's really essential for doing some of that tier one work. So I guess I'm just going to throw it back to you guys. And I'm sorry, I feel bad doing it that way, but I want to let people know where I stand on it. I'm never going to turn down the opportunity to have more resources. I developed a budget, tried to take into the challenges of retirement in a position that was going to leave me in a situation that couldn't fill that same position, and how to restructure it in a way, use the funds from one to help cover the other, so that we could end up with a similarly costing program without adding cost to it. And that's, in thinking about how to address a continuum of student services, that's where I ended up. I get the tax piece, Howie. I get it. I heard a whole spiel yesterday up in Northfield from the governor and from the secretary, talking about all the elements and the impacts of the taxes. And I think, I think people don't understand the system, which causes frustration and anger. I think Emily's right in sort of thinking, "This is the system. Whether it gets changed in the future, fantastic. But this is the system we have to operate under now." But you know what? I can't run a school without a budget. I can't, I don't want to be doing this in March and April and trying to... Because my fear is that if the folks here vote down a budget that doesn't have that element in it, that, and they're going to work hard to do it, they showed us that before, if that budget gets voted down, my concern is that we're going to be cutting more. We're not going to be adding stuff back in. And I'm not sure that everyone here understands that. But we're going to be cutting more. That's not how it's going to, and I know, Dan, I know what you're going to say to that, but that's what's going to happen. That's the reality. And I don't, I mean, I'm risking future services I'm providing for kids because of this outrage. That's how it works. Budgets don't get added to when they get voted down. It doesn't happen. So I'm concerned about my ability to function, where am I going to be down the road? And so sort of like the taking one for the team, if you will, part of it, like, it's, I'm not going to turn down extra services, and I'm going to dump it back on your guys' lap. Sorry. I'll crawl under the table then.
Howie?
I want to make a motion to direct Bob to put back two days of social worker, to get us back to three days a week. Two out of our budget, one out of the STEM budget, or whatever, special education budget. And I think you've done a fantastic job putting this budget together. And I'm not making this a motion because I am an educational expert, or a social worker expert, or a psychological expert. I am making this motion because we have to get our budget passed. And I know that if all these folks walk out of here pissed off because this position has been eliminated, we're going to have, it's going to be, we're not going to pass the budget. So purely on, you know, that political basis, I think we need to listen to the community and put those two days back in. I fully support the school counselors, the two full-time school counselors. I think that's been a weak spot in our school for a long time, having sent three kids here. The kids need more guidance, you know, to get them on a college track or whatever track they're going to be on. So, yeah, I think, my motion is to put those two days back in, give you the direction you need. You did a great job putting this together, but we have to listen to the community. So that's my motion.
Can I ask Howie a question?
Sure. You can, or I can.
Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I, Howie didn't give a number.
Yeah, could you?
So, and I was just going to ask, I had made a suggestion earlier, because I really am concerned about health and safety issues that our administration is telling us about here, of 17.5. And I, when we have motions on budgets, normally we do numbers, not positions. So I would ask, and I'm going to amend, what I'm trying to tell you is, I'm probably going to amend it to add that 17.5 in, because I don't think we can turn our backs on health and safety issues in the building.
So what's our new bottom line, Lori?
We even say no.
So, do you want the, just the expenditure piece of it? To be able to, because that's what you're really voting on, is expenditure.
Yeah. What's the expenditure piece of it, so that we can actually get the warning done?
Six million, two sixty-eight, seven eighty-two.
Is that still present or a reduction?
Well, hold on, let me clarify something. Is that adding the two days and the, you haven't done that yet, right?
My motion is only for the social worker.
Okay, hold on.
Excuse me, Joe, point of clarification or question clarification?
Sure.
Howie, I just want to make sure I understand what you're suggesting. Two days that would come out of the...
School budget.
The school budget, and then one day that would be paid for through special education. Okay, thank you, Joe, for the opportunity, get clarification.
Six million, two fifty-one, two eighty-two.
And that's just Howie's motion, not the additional 17.5 that cover the...
Six two five one zero eight two.
Two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two. I did write that down, six two five one two eighty-two.
Yeah, I'm just trying to stay.
Okay. So, Howie, your motion is to, your motion then is, in addition to that, is that bottom-line number?
Yes.
Thank you. And Lindell, that's your second?
Yes.
May I clarify, you're bringing the budget number, the six million, two fifty-one, two eighty-two, in that motion?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, there's, Emily wants to make an amendment. And that's your new...
Well, you've already added it.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to add in those health and safety issues that our administration has shared with us that need to be performed, which total seventeen thousand, five hundred. And just for clarity, their replacement of smoke detectors, their emergency lighting replacement on A and B levels, C and D level have already been completed, and their Dutton exterior door, the front door repair, it's an Egress issue, it doesn't open. Those are safety issues, so.
So that would give us six two six eight seven eighty-two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second.
Could I say something? Am I loud?
Certainly. Always.
As the superintendent, I'm in a weird position, because I am not the principal of the school. I am not on a daily interaction with the community or the students. I'm also not on a daily interaction with the board, but I do get a nice perspective of seeing the unbelievable challenge it is in this environment for the board to represent you and for you to inform the board while you support the leadership of a school that ultimately is creating the next generation of support and services for your kids. And I do very much appreciate the respectful communication that was consistent throughout this discussion. And I just really hope that people can go away from this, respecting differences, being able to communicate that you might see things from different perspectives, you might be extremely passionate about something, but one thing I am unbelievably sure of is that you all care deeply about this community and the students. And I don't want that to be lost in the back and forth of what is absolutely necessary in Vermont education. So, not being from Vermont, being here for only a decade, so I will never be from Vermont, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to celebrate that, because wherever this ends up, nobody has been rude, everybody has been caring, and that is the strength that's going to make this a very resilient community. So, I'm sorry.
So, we can discuss the, I mean, we'll have to discuss the amendment and then vote on the amendment, and then we can move back to discussing the original motion, and then vote on the original motion. So, you want to speak to your amendment, other than what you've already done?
I think, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, because I sat in on the building committee conversation. I think I've explained it already.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to give you the chance to speak to it first.
Yeah, we definitely need to do some of these small projects. And Ed is amazing. He gave us more than enough information on the wood chip burner and the hot water tanks. And I'm really glad that we have him working here, because he has put in a lot of time keeping things working. And we really should shout out to him. He's pretty good.
What's Ed Flash's name?
McGrath.
McGrath.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. The amendment that we're voting on is to increase the budget by the seventeen thousand, five hundred necessary for the items identified as safety items in the building committee report. All in favor of that, please say it. It's an amendment to a motion, right? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So now the original amendment, the budget figure is amended to be six million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Before we vote, Lori, can I ask you to, what does that make our equalized per pupil spending end up being?
With the penalty, twenty thousand, zero eight zero.
Twenty zero eight zero.
Which is a 5% increase over last year's.
Okay. Those were the two things I was wondering about.
I'm sorry, four point six.
In the warning language, would it be four point six or five? Do we round?
No, we put four point six.
Four point six, sorry. Yeah. Should have gone up to...
And last year was 12%.
Yeah, last year was 12% higher than the year before.
And was the number 20?
Twenty zero eight zero.
Twenty thousand, eighty, right?
Thank you.
Correct.
All right. So, any discussion now on the main motion to approve the six million, two hundred and...
Fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
Yes, okay. Go ahead, you're the motion maker.
I made the motion because if this budget doesn't pass, we will have to cut. And even without this position being restored, we're still over the threshold. So everybody here who supports this budget is going to have to get out and really push for it, because if it doesn't pass, we will be coming. There's no choice. And Bob said...
Howie, you have my commitment. I will go on record saying that I will actively support passage of the budget.
Very good. And I hope everybody gets out there and does support it, and also puts pressure on Montpelier to come up with a better way of funding our schools.
I agree with you, Howie. You know, I have, you know, I've gotten phone calls mostly, but just also stopped publicly and, you know, had people voice their concerns about what this budget is, you know, what they've heard what the budget is going to be is going to do to their taxes. And, you know, after last year's, I got a phone call from a constituent, and I said, "Well, you never showed up at the meeting." And they said, "We trusted you to do the right thing." And I feel I'm very conflicted with this. I know that part of what we're doing here is the right thing, but we're also stuck with the funding formula, and we are, you know, there are a lot of people, poverty is one of our huge issues that's requiring us to have a social worker. How do you ask impoverished people to, you know, pay more?
They won't.
If those people come out, yes, everyone, even income sensitivity people will pay more on the penalty. Yes, they do. It's true. Lori, go ahead, can you...
So, if you go back to the documents that I gave you, more of their income will be taxed, is basically what happens. So there's a difference, well, before we added, let's say, Wyndham, last year, 2.85% of income would be taxed, and this year it's 3.26. This is based on before we added these things. So, and can I just add one thing? Is, you know, I would just ask that you are also supportive of your elementaries as well, because they are facing, Jamaica now is at a 36 cents increase. So, you know, same thing, to come out and support their budgets as well, because they're looking at a very, they're looking at having to cut as well. So, you know, it's not just here. I guess that's what I want to say. It's all over, and I'm seeing it every day.
And if I can just say, there are kids...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Next year it'll be official. There'll be kids.
Yes, that's right.
Well, even.
Can't wait. So, one budget. Did I mention that? One budget.
Exactly. One budget. Anyone else? All right. All in favor of the motion to, actually, can you read it back, Peter? I can't remember the whole. I know it's direct, Bob, to, it's the bottom-line number, it's six two six eight seven eighty-two.
It's way back up here.
Okay, well, all right, six eight, or six two six eight seven eight two is the bottom-line budget number with the direction. I don't have the exact motion.
Mr. Ives, move to put back...
It's okay. The motion was amended from Howie's original motion, and we all know what it is at this point. The bottom-line number is what we need to vote.
To reinstate the position.
Right.
To do the health and safety issues.
So, all in favor of the bottom-line budget number being six million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, or, I'm sorry, yeah, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
With the addition of the social worker.
Right, with Howie's, with Howie's direction and the safety money put in, and all of that is all in there. That's the vote we're making. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. So, you have everything you need to do the budget warning, right?
Bill's got it.
I've got it right now, so I'm sending it to you.
I have, okay, you're emailing it to me?
You want me to? Because only Joe's... There's only Joe's, yeah, and Lori. Uh, we'll need a motion for you to sign the warning.
Right. Oh, we're not done yet. We're not done by any stretch. We still have a bunch of business to take care of, folks. Several motions to pass. The night's hardly over. Okay, so, we need to, we, we're gonna need to approve a budget warning and authorize me to sign it, um, but while that gets emailed around, um, let's move on down. Um, the students didn't come tonight or email a report. Bob, we've had, Bill's report, we've had already.
Well, there is a, you have my written report.
Bill does have a report, a, a short, I've lost it in my papers, but if you could...
Sure.
Hey, everybody, if you could quiet down, we're still trying to have a meeting here, maybe go out in the hall and talk. Thank you very much.
That's what we're talking about right now.
All right.
Yeah.
This, this way here. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we've got Bob's report. Um, Bob, if there's anything in there you wanna actually address quickly, go ahead.
Well, one of those, there were two things really. One was informational, just about the Abbey Group, our contracted food source provider did reduce their staff due to low participation numbers. They didn't feel like they needed to have, uh, three full-time people to provide, um, food, so they would use one to get to two. And then the second thing, which was very exciting, happened this week. Um, the, the woman who came in and did our design thinking work with us last year, um, and I have co-applied and have been accepted to present at the, the New England Secondary Schools Consortium redesign, Schools Redesign in Action Conference in March in Providence.
That's huge.
And, yeah, to be accepted, it's a big deal. There's a lot of pretty exclusive schools that are in there. So, um, she and I and Jesse Reiman Schneider, um, will go down and present at that conference about, not, not necessarily about what our end game was, but about the process we have undertaken to get to a place about thinking about redesigning schools. And, um, hopefully by the time we get to March, we'll, we'll have a firmer idea of what that end game's gonna look like for next fall around, um, some sort of an academy, um, that's gonna focus on personalization, that we're gonna be able to run for a select group of kids. So, that's what we're gonna be talking about, but really, we're gonna be describing the process of how design thinking was a mechanism to get us there. So, pretty exciting stuff, it's a big conference.
Yeah, that's, that's, congratulations.
Thanks.
Huge. Thank you for your brevity.
Something written down on it? Uh, it's in my report. Oh, great, thanks, absolutely.
Can I ask about this one?
Yeah, yeah, I actually wanna know myself, but I'm like, um, I want somebody to talk about the governor's conference.
Bob and I were there.
And Emily?
Emily was there.
I mean, I wish everybody had stayed in the room to hear that part of it.
Director was here.
Um, and, yeah, they were there too. But I, I wanted to ask the two of you who were there also whether you heard the same message that I heard, which I'm really narrowing everything right down to a, well, besides the slap on the hand, um, there were two pretty bold themes, and, and I know we've heard, and I think so many of you understand this, we've heard, um, that our schools are spending too much money, um, and that we don't wanna see any increases over two and a half percent this year, um, but, but there, and there have been quite a few, but there was a walk forward on, um, staff to student ra- and student to staff ratios, and then a sort of walk back from the administration. I'm talking about the governor's office, his administration, um, walked back on that a little bit, saying, I don't know if we wanna really wanna prescribe it, but, but we really need to see a reduction in staff across the state. But there were two sort of things that I thought popped out for me, um, and one of them was a pie chart that showed, um, and Suzanne Young, who's his, um, administrative, it's, especially her administration, spoke about, um, the, the piece of the pie chart, which was K-12 education, pre-K-12 education, shrinking and expanding in other areas. That was a pretty loud message to me, um, that, that there is, what I have said all along, a grab, a money grab for, from the, um, ed fund. So I think that's really important that we're hearing that, that, um, it worries me a lot, uh, because i- if money is taken from the ed fund, its taxes go up, or we have to reduce spending a great deal. And so I, I just wanted to put that out there. The other piece was, there is a message in my mind from the administration saying we need to close schools. And I heard that.
Yes.
And, um, that, that also really concerns me, because I've been saying all along that I think that the, the work around, um, decisions like that should be made at a local level. I don't necessarily mean only, you know, the few people in a community do that, but we need to be looking at our funding system, as we've heard clearly, and that is being done. But, but we really, you know, I don't want any of that message to be, to disappear, because there is some very strong pressure, um, that's coming from the top, and it's not coming from nothing. It's coming because our, our ed spending is pretty high here, and, um, I would venture to say that our results are pretty good, but they're not where they should be for that kind of spending, I think. And I think we're hearing that. So I guess I heard those two pretty bold themes that, yesterday, and I wondered whether you guys wanted to say anything to that, or whether...
I mean, I've definitely heard that as well, and, and the other thing that I heard specifically around the high school piece was about the career stuff, um, the work-based learning elements they talked a lot about, and the doing our own piece they talked a lot about. And I feel like Leland and Gray is well-positioned in both those worlds already, so I felt pretty good, like, yep, doing that, doing that, doing that, check that, check that. So I felt pretty good about that. Um, one of the things that came up in my table group, 'cause they, they did a little dog and pony about certain things, and then they asked the table groups to discuss it on yourselves. Um, one of the things that came up, actually, it was related to the conversation we had here tonight, was about the mental health burdens that schools are, are facing. And one of the things that, um, came up my table group, and I had this, a member of the Senate Ed Committee, I forget what the guy's name was, um, but anyways, he was at my table.
Joe Benning.
Benning, yeah. He was at my table, and so one of the things that we talked about was, you know, we have this, this ed fund, which is shrinking because of the la- the, the fewer, the less revenue going into it. There's also this idea of like, spreading out where the, the K-12 money is into other areas, so that was sort of slipped in there, that we wanna move some of the K-12 money to other parts of the ed fund.
Right.
So, not only is the pool getting smaller, but our share of the pool is getting smaller. And, and we were talking about at our table, the idea that what if we have, you know, we're providing mental health services, um, in schools. The ed fund is about education, and our primary function needs to be about education. And yet, as been pointed out in a lot of the conversation, it's challenging to, sometimes for certain students to learn if they don't have the support. So, we talked about the idea, what if AHS had mental health funding that went to schools? Rather than using ed funding to pay for the mental health support, AHS should be paying for that. And there should be like a, now it's the same, it's the same money, it's all from the same, the same revenue streams, sort of. And the response of the, of the legislator was, well, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. My response was, we're already robbing Peter to pay Paul, we're looking to get Paul to pay for Paul and Peter to pay for Peter. Um, so just thinking about things like that at the state level that we could do, which could help offset burdens for us, for any school, around those kinds of things. If we're doing the job of more and more social agencies, which we're always asked to do more and more and more, why not have that actually funded through the social agency budget rather than through the ed fund? That was one of the things we...
That's supported by...
Uh, the Agency of Health and Human Services.
That's supported also by the fact that, um, we have been adding things to the ed fund, um, that, you know, expenses coming out of the ed fund, such as teacher retirement and pension, um, which were never here before, and the argument is that, well, they're teachers, that should come out of the ed fund. Well, mental health services may be, if you're gonna have that argument, that, that's a legitimate concern.
And I like the metaphor, which is a little bit, uh, hyperbolic, but the idea is that we have, um, you know, if the schools are asked to do more and more and more and more and more and more all the time, the next logical step is, well, why should towns plow their roads? The buses are going out anyways, slap a plow in the front of a bus, let them do it. They're, they're gonna get their kids to school. And it's this ridiculous example, but it, but it highlights the idea of like, all the stuff that we're asked to do, and next thing you know, we'll be paying for plowing roads. And it's, it's laughable, but it's, it starts to get at the question of why we, we are, we're focusing a lot of money away from the academic world to put into other things. And that's, to me, part of this challenge, that part of this conversation today was about that very challenge, so.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I heard a lot about structure, and, um, definitely the fiscal pressures are there, but, um, using the, uh, any flexibility that you are creating under, uh, new mergers to rethink and redesign and reexamine, um, how you are doing a delivery of service. Not, in our small group, it wasn't a discussion about closing schools, but it was a, it was a discussion about repurposing and rethinking about how you are delivering education based on research and evidence instead of geography. Um, you know, what is best for kids instead of what has always been. And so that was a really nice discussion that we had, and I think that this, the new West River Board's gonna have that opportunity to have that discussion, um, and we're gonna need the support of our community as we go through those kind of transformations. Um, definitely heard some intimations that there was gonna be some sort of, uh, downward pressure on, uh, per pupil costs based on, uh, school expenditures, so that there might be some sort of thing that, uh, instead of just having the threshold, that if your school operates over the threshold for a certain amount of years, then you may not have the ability to operate that school because you've shown that you are that expensive, or something like that. Um, there were some really positive things that came out, especially in my, um, little table group. We had a really nice discussion, a great, uh, idea about aligning the, um, legislatures and the AOE's priorities with relicensure of teachers and principals. So, for example, uh, I'm up for relicensure as a principal, we are rolling out Act seventy-seven, we know it's gonna include personalized learning plans and proficiency-based, um, learning. So, part of the requirement when I go through relicensure should be to upskill in those areas. If we recognize that students in our earlier grades need really high-quality reading instruction, well, if you are an elementary school teacher over your five-year relicensure, that's probably something that we should have as part of the requirement. So, and that would be at a statewide level, so that we would be supporting these things that we've already committed to, that we believe are necessary, but it wouldn't cost any more money. It's just more of a, uh, a commitment and an alignment of resources, so I was really excited to hear that. There was some scary stuff, but, um, really positive too. Those are the things.
Always have.
Always have.
I just love that about you.
I know.
Question?
Sure.
About the, um, equalized people's spending and the costs. Um, we know that our area here, our school is located in one of the largest geographic areas in the state.
The second largest.
The second largest that we cover. How much of those extra expenses with just busing, gas, that kind of, how much of that is figured into our equalized people's spending? The, the cost of running transportation? That, well, I know it is, so that's what I'm saying. So, in comparison with other areas of the state, where those schools don't have as great of a, a cost, how, I mean, we're, we're being, not only because we're a small school, but because we're in a large geographic area, trying to meet the needs of kids, that we don't want them on a bus an hour and a half, one way in the morning and afternoon.
Would I be responsible, Gerald, on that?
Okay.
Um, we, in the legislature, passed a study about rural waiting, um, because we wanna know the answer to that too. And, um, to this date, the secretary hasn't, um, uh, done that study yet. I don't know whether that will get done, I'm not sure, um, where the status of that is. They don't have the resources to do it, that's what they're saying, so, and I understand they don't, like, you know, they literally don't have the resources in-house to conduct that study. I think they're planning on doing it when they can. But that, when that study is done, I think that will answer a lot more of our questions, because there's no question, rural and small schools, um, feel the pain.
That's one of the alternatives, and here what's happening is, you know, we're being pressured to reduce our budget, cut programs, cut a social worker position that is so essential, and, because we have to be under this threshold when those other expenses make it that we are over our threshold. And yet, again, we don't wanna be busing kids so far away. We serve a large geographic region, so, I would really urge them to get on the job there, because the end result is what you see tonight.
I would just caution that there's just limited resources all around, and that's why I, you know, I, I think we need to understand it better, and I agree with all, you know, that was said, but...
I have a question. How's Elizabeth Holcomb's office doing reducing, how's she doing on reducing her budget? How is she...
Secretary Holcomb?
Yeah, how?
They reduce it every year.
What's that?
They're less every year.
Their, their budget, the last I heard was, it's forty percent lower today than it was in two thousand and eight.
Good.
Or a little more, I think, now.
And what about, what about consolidation of supervisor unions?
Actually, I've got something for you on that, Howie.
I bet you do.
Um, well, no, you're the, no, I didn't get something from you, I'm gonna give you something.
Okay.
Uh, that was part of the discussion, was that, uh, we have less students, so therefore, if we're gonna operate a system that has gone from a hundred thousand students to seventy-seven thousand, then, uh, conceivably, it makes sense to have less supervisor unions, less superintendents, less principals, less teachers, less buildings, less things. I mean, I, I, I don't think anybody, I don't think there's anything protected from the reality of there's gonna be a discussion constantly about less, because you have less students to serve, so, there's less.
You know, I had a discussion with Elizabeth Holcomb about this.
Rebecca.
Rebecca Holcomb, uh, where she, she said, well, this is up to the supervisor unions to come up with consolidation plans, and my response to her was, the state draws up the supervisor union boundaries. It's on you to reorganize this stuff, not on us.
I, I would say that you're probably gonna see multiple of those provided in the statewide plan, which comes out in June of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Reorganization of such issues.
Yep, I think you're right.
I think you're right.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I think, like, I think that's the natural progression, and, uh, our best defense is to be awesome.
Working on it. We're trying. Okay, so, that was, that was Bob's report. Bill, you got anything?
I got nothing, it's ten tw- ten.
It's ten-ten, and we still got motions.
It's wonderful.
Beautiful. All right, so we're to new business, we got the driver's ed lease.
Lori, Lori.
Yes.
You wanna explain this really quickly, and we'll get a motion?
Sure. Um, the first, uh, you did a resolution back a couple months ago for, um, one company, and that fell through, so this is a new company. Uh, the price is a little bit higher, um, because of, the leases are at, companies are not wanting to lease to municipalities anymore, really, especially when you put the term driver's ed car on it. So, um, it is a little more expensive, but not as expensive as it would've been had we gone with the first company. Makes sense?
Yeah, so, we, we didn't go with the first provider, we have the second provider, which is, uh...
So, um...
Through Duran?
Bradboro, no, Bradboro Subaru.
Okay, so it's a Subaru, and it's actually less money than the last one.
After the municipality, um, was factored in, yes, it is less money.
Beautiful, so we need a motion to authorize and direct me to sign on behalf of the board, the...
Let me just look.
What?
I just, let me just look at like, there's, like, there's something she wants to...
Well, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm waiting for her, 'cause her mouth is like...
Yeah, so with the resolution...
She's got something she wants to say.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify what the resolution is, is basically giving me permission to enter into a lease on Leland and Gray's behalf.
So, that's the motion I would like to make.
Okay, so that's the motion, sorry.
I'll second. That's, that was my face.
'Cause I was like...
I'm sorry, I was trying to hurry, and I didn't slow you down.
No, it's okay, but I knew she needed it done a certain way, that was the motion, so...
Uh, authorize the business manager or the treasurer of the board?
The business manager.
The business manager to enter into...
Enter into a lease agreement for the car.
For the driver's education car.
Okay. It's been moved by Emily and seconded by Twila. Any discussion on that motion? None, seeing none, all in favor of the motion to authorize the business manager to enter to lease for the driver's ed car? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I'm signing. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
You want to explain this one too?
Sure. These are new signature cards for the Leland and Gray checking accounts. We had somebody that didn't come back this year who was on the signature cards, so we're replacing them with somebody different. Do I need to name names? If I can name names if I need to?
You're asking us to...
Just re-sign signature cards? We're asking Joe to re-sign signature cards with taking one person off that it no longer works for the district and putting somebody else on.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. And I'm happy to make that motion to move things along too. Accept that?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
You explain so well.
Any discussion on it?
Yeah, does everybody understand? I mean, do you get it? Yeah, okay. Sorry, you have to do this.
Both are authorized. Signature first?
Yes, new signature cards for the...
Joe to sign. The chair to sign.
Yes.
New signature first.
Oh, for the chair to sign new signature cards.
To replace...
Authorizing...
Authorize the chair to sign...
New signature cards authorizing the new signer to be able to sign Leland and Gray checks.
There you go.
Removing. Keep it at that.
Authorizing signatories for the Leland and Gray checking account.
Very...
Yep.
We'll put... Thank you.
Any discussion on that?
Do I have to go sign in front of them?
So, you have to take that to the bank?
Okay. So, I won't sign in that part.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Beautiful, we're done. Okay. Bills and pay orders. Do we have the sheet?
Yeah, there's problems.
Oh.
There's a pay order for $200 for snowboard annual league fee and I just heard that we don't have a snowboard team.
Sorry.
So, I'm a little...
He's asking a question about a...
There's apparently a $200 snowboard league fee pay order.
We have a $200... We have a pay order for a $200 snowboard league team fee.
Probably written before the most recent decision.
And the most recent information I have is there is no snowboard team.
Yeah, we didn't have the numbers of kids to come out to do it, so I'm not sure how that works.
Me neither. And I'm also, I gotta say, I'm disturbed that a school where kids have been snowboarding since kindergarten and is in the shadow of several ski mountains has... Is not able to put together a snowboard team.
It's really disappointing.
Yeah, it is really disappointing.
Especially given last year's budget to add it back in.
Yeah, and my understanding is that the rules were changed for the snowboard team, leading a lot of kids who would have otherwise gone out for the team to not.
Yeah, the shift... The only shift that I'm aware of was that we, instead of having the kids drive themselves to Mount Snow on winter activity days, that we were gonna transport them instead because it was doing as a team.
Yeah, that was a huge... I guess that was a huge problem for a lot of kids who drive.
Well, it was a huge problem to have the kids transport themselves. This is really a solution to that, which is what we do. It's consistent with how we treat other varsity sports. Kids don't drive themselves to events and things. Well, the practices are here. It's different than being off campus, so...
Right, but up till then, you know, the kids had the option to drive themselves. I mean, I know, for instance, my kid, as an example, his mom lives right by Mount Snow and he would drive himself to practice and then go stay with his mom. If he has to take the bus, then he either has no car or he has to make a round trip back and forth two hours to get those cars back to his mom's house.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, all I can say is there was challenges last year that we needed to correct. And so, this was our correction. So, that's really...
Was this already paid? I'm sorry.
Well, it's too bad that the kids aren't willing to do that because it involves having to get on a bus.
We think that's already paid.
As far as it being paid, I don't know how that works.
No, the checks aren't cut till we authorize the pay order, so we just adjust it.
So, I've deducted that and said this is the new pay order. So, that's what...
So, Howie, you can make the motion for the new...
So, I'd say, Howie, if you want to... If you're gonna connect with Marty and I, we can sit down and talk about it.
Yeah, we'd like to talk about it. Because honestly, this is a factor. This is a big factor to attract kids to our school. Having a... We have a... We've had a championship snowboarding for many, many years and this is a big industry around here. For some reason or other, kids have lost interest in snowboarding. I'm really a little disturbed. And I also understand that now the GIPS snowboarding programs...
Can you make the motion for the bills and pay orders?
Please. I'll talk to you about it.
Call Marty and we'll talk.
Great.
All right. Motion for bills and pay orders is $103,407.73.
Yeah, we'll be given...
Is there a second?
I have a second.
You were the second reviewer, right?
I was the first.
You were the first. You were the two.
Yeah.
Twyla's second.
Okay. And we've already dealt with the questions, so any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving the bills and pay orders in the amount Howie read? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No? Motion passes. All right, we have the consent. We need a motion...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with minutes of 11:07.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor of approving a consent agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Any other business? Howie, you want to talk some more about snowboarding?
Yeah.
Maybe for the next...
I just want to say that snowboarding, our winter sports program has now become contingent upon refused-to-use program.
You know, that's a condition of the mountain, right? They said, "We want to run the kids through this program or we won't give you passes or you could pay for them." So, that's a condition of the mountain, not a condition of the school. And we could kick about it and the mountain will say, "Then pay for the passes." Just no, because my last exchange student went through it and it was explained to me by the mountain people. So, you know, it is contingent on that, yes, but, you know, it's also a huge freebie and the mountain gets to put the kids through. In a refused-to-use thing, when we're talking about needing to hire extra people to deal with the crisis of people using...
I gotta say that my kid and I had been through this refused-to-use thing and their program every year since seventh grade, along with all his friends. And as far as I can see, this program does absolutely nothing to discourage kids from using roads.
All right. Any other business?
I know we're doing the refused-to-use.
Nope.
All right, no executive session. Next meeting is January 16th. That's been corrected. One final motion, folks.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.